Good evening, everyone. All in to order, the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs on Tuesday, July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-one, to six thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuza.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Terapani.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiotis.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Kinney from the Old Saints Episcopal Church, following by the Pledge of Allegion.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, we ask that tonight you send down upon the Board of Commissioners of Tarpin Springs the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with unwavering purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
One religion, two faith, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, tonight's regularization agenda has been revised. If you please make a note that the following agenda items have been deferred. Agenda item number one, the Stormwater Action Plan, has been deferred to August tenth, two thousand twenty-one regularization. The agenda item number four, the Award File Number twenty-one zero one eighty, single-source purchase of city marketing for culture and civil services, civic services, has been deferred to the August tenth, two thousand twenty-one regularization. The agenda item number fourteen, to authorize execution of the agreement with Pinellas County for right-of-way transfers, has been deferred to August tenth, two thousand twenty-one regularization. And the agenda item number twenty-four, approval of job description for future sustainability position, deferred to a future commission meeting, date to be determined. I also like to remind to anyone that based on our city code, all public comments must be directed only to the Chair of the Meeting in a professional manner with respect without a personal attacks. And course number one has been deferred, so we go to the consent agenda, which is item number two.
Mayor, you can fill out the comments.
You're right, I need to do that. Need be corrected. We go to the public comments on items that will not be discussed today. If you have any comments, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll be given four minutes. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Paul Smith. Robin Sanger, sixteen thirty, Lonesome Pine Lane, Tarpin Springs, Florida. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about transitions. When Commissioners and Mayors, Public Services Directors, City Managers leave, sometimes their positive accomplishments can get lost or minimized, simply because any transition is about change. It would be devastating, for example, for a police chief. It would be unconscionable for a police chief to leave without his next steps or her next steps in mind of succession planning. Same with public works. It would be devastating to a city if a city manager were to abruptly leave, for example. Well, we know there's going to be change on this board in March of two thousand twenty-two. So let's think ahead. I urge those of you who have senior ideas to make Tarpin Springs better, develop a plan to see that those good ideas don't get lost in transition. Let me give you a few examples. Mayor Alahuza, your work with the senior services has done remarkably well in the city. I appreciate that. Also, the expanded role of the sister cities. Commissioner Donovan, your work with the youth sports, and all of you have contributed in your roles. There are a lot more than just that can be mentioned now, because right now you need to focus on your present agenda. But these are good ideas that should continue and expand even after that transition brings change. I urge those of you who made Tarpin Springs better to develop a plan to see that your good work is not lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Maya. I live at six oh eight Windrush Bay Drive in Tarpin. I've been a resident of Tarpin Springs since two thousand and seven. Some of you may already know me. I formed Silver King Brewing Company back in two thousand thirteen with Brett Gamrot. What you may not know about me is that I have over thirty years of experience in the hospitality industry. During this time, I worked for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, supporting Pinellas County. The Bureau supported all the cities within the county to bring economic impact to our respective areas. My role with the Bureau was to provide financial assistance, support and help grow events and bring more events to our area, create more heads and beds, thus generating economic impact. Financial assistance ranged from five thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars. Tarpin Springs, for many years, was the recipient of generous funds to grow various events. They were also provided with professional advice and feedback on how to improve their events. Due to my professional knowledge and experience, I've been able to speak and provide evidence on how food trucks are a significant foundation to an event's success and a city's potential to attract tourism. Due to my experience, I was also able to provide feedback to the city after Tarpin Springs' first snow fest. The city only allowed restaurants to provide food to the attendees. No food trucks were allowed. This was a complete failure. Restaurants had enormous lines. There were no bathroom facilities to support the foot traffic. The restaurants alone could not solely support this event. Customers trying to get food in the restaurant waited for hours. If they were lucky enough to be seated, they waited longer for food. And if they ever got seated and got their bill, it was likely comped due to the fact that the service was too slow or they never received their orders. This was my personal experience, as many others I know. The following year, the city retreated and sought the help from food trucks to provide easier access to food and beverage for the event. Yes, the event was a success. Attendees were able to visit the restaurants as well as the food trucks. It was a win-win for both the food trucks, the restaurants, but most importantly, the attendees. You see, there's always a desire to sit down for a meal, even during a typical event or typical day. There is also the desire for a food truck in an event and a typical day. The restaurants and the food trucks can work in harmony if one wants to. There is no reason to be greedy for a customer's dollar. What this greed does is prevent potential customers, tourists, and economic impact to our city. The city's lack of support for the food trucks without a brick and mortar is a disgrace. Instead of assisting our community to grow and making our area more attractive, we prevent food truck owners from providing a living to support their families. These restaurants do not provide the sole stability of the city. Competition is healthy, as we have seen with multiple breweries, antique shops, as well as retail shops. The lack of support is unhealthy and tearing our community apart by a select few of restaurant owners that are being greedy. The Commissioners, who are followers, and lack the integrity to stand up for what is right, and the Commissioners, who have their own personal agenda. The followers walk cowardly behind Commissioners who play the favoritism game. These Commissioners, who are followers, are not leaders. They lack the maturity required of an elected official. They should not hold Commissioner seats. They don't want to ruffle the feathers of ones who have gotten comfortable in their seats. Why? Because they want to keep their Christmas receipt and mold it to their own interests. They have learned and have seen it, for example. As many in the community, I will be happy when elections come forth and remove the people who are here.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Dory Larson. I live at eighteen forty-six Lexington Place in Tarpin Springs, and tonight I am speaking on the need for a full-time sustainability position for the city. I've already outlined in my memo to you all our Sustainability Committee's rationale, but tonight I'm speaking as a citizen. I feel there is a need for a dedicated full-time position to accomplish the staggering amount of work needed to address already occurring flooding and ongoing risks to Tarpin Springs that Tarpin Springs faces due to climate change, as well as a myriad of sustainability work needed by the city. Also, the position is supported by data from citizen input and can be paid for using federal American Rescue Plan funds if the position is tied to outcomes to improve water and sewer infrastructure per federal requirements, especially because our city's unique risk of percentage of property at sea level. As you know, Tarpin is receiving between ten and eleven million dollars. Then, in subsequent years, we could tie the position's funding to obtaining grant funding. Data from the survey on the city's website on what residents want to see in the future is all related to sustainability. The question posed is, thinking thirty to forty years into the future of Tarpin Springs, which of the following topics do you find most critical for our future? Please check the top ten that are most important to you, and all of the results ranked in order of response. These are the results that are ranked in order of response. The first is safe community. The second is land preservation. We should be doing this proactively. We don't have anyone at the city working full-time with partners and identifying funding mechanisms to identify land for preservation. Look at the mess with the Walmart property and how much better handled it could have been if we were working proactively. The third is preserving history and historic structures. We need a full-time person working to identify historic structures and seeking funding for preservation and adaptation for flooding and rising waters. The fourth is parks and open space. The fifth is preserving working waterfront. The sixth is a walkable community. Seventh is sustainability, called out by itself. The eighth is sea level rise and maintaining our unique identity. These two items were tied. We need to develop and implement a green infrastructure plan to reduce flooding and increase resilience during heavy rainy seasons. And then the next two are also tied, promoting local businesses and tree preservation. We need to work with our local merchants to educate them on sustainable practices and coordinate and secure state and federal grants to fund adaptation and mitigation efforts for our local businesses. We don't have a hurricane shelter in Tarpin Springs anymore. The county removed our Tarpin School's hurricane shelter. Most residents don't know that. The county based this decision on flood projections, and the data shows that we are too vulnerable to support a shelter. We need to educate our community members on this and many other issues so that we can take action before it's too late and we are not able to. Lending institutions are beginning to apply local government preparedness for climate change to their credit rating. Having a high municipal bond rating is critical to the city's ability to secure funding for the work we will need to do to keep our city functioning in the future. In an article, "A Framework for Analyzing Municipal Climate Risk," linked, and I can provide the link, from NASDAQ dot com, Emily Rames, Vice President of Moody's Public Finance Group, says, quote, "We look not just at the vulnerability of state and local governments, but their ability to manage the impact. While we're looking at the data on sea levels and who may be more vulnerable, we're also looking at what these governments are doing to mitigate the impact," end quote. The time is now to act and hire a full-time sustainability director who can implement the Sustainability Action Plan and strategically work across all departments, including finance, to prioritize which resilience and which mitigation efforts will give us the biggest bang for our buck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Julie Wade, ten ninety-five Main Sale. As always, thank you for your service and dedication to our city, and I'll piggyback on what Dory said, but I'll make it short. I'm here again to represent several groups of residents who sincerely hope you'll follow the direction that our Sustainability Committee pointed you toward. Please include a full-time sustainability position in the budget you are setting. Let's not repeat the mistakes made with the Spongestock signage, as an example. Delays in the signage debacle proved costly. The same could happen as other regions look for sustainability candidates and raise salary levels, as well as pick up the top candidates. We're certain there is enough work for a full-time job. The funding alone that hopefully the legislature has allocated for land preservation and acquisition should be sought for the Klosterman Parcel and other areas. Being proactive and including this position in our budget ensures we are doing our best as a city to be better prepared for the future. Please help us use science, planning, and forethought to keep Tarpin a great place to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Denise Menino. I live at four seventy Cypress Street, Tarpin. I won't repeat everything that Dory Larson shared. It was the details of the reason that I have come here tonight is just to urge you to seriously consider a full-time sustainability coordinator or manager for the City of Tarpin Springs. I understand that this isn't on the agenda tonight, but I think that in lieu of the budget meeting, it needs to be something that you consider. My family and I located to Tarpin Springs in two thousand twelve, and we came from a city that prioritized sustainability. And for many years, I worked for a co-op that also valued and taught us environmental stewardship. And in two thousand twelve, knowing Tarpin Springs was somewhat behind the curve when I moved here, and also seeing how climate change realities were becoming consistently more apparent, I started kind of an educational blog, Sustainable Tarpin Springs, and I kept posting on a weekly basis for eighteen months. But I was warned by friends in this area that I was pushing a boulder uphill. And in August, August sixth, two thousand thirteen, actually, it's almost eight years ago now, I met with the City Manager Mark LaCourus and Commissioner Jeff Larson to promote the idea of a sustainability coordinator, and I shared a copy of another city's sustainability plan. And I just hoped that that would inspire and the beginning of a process to integrate all aspects of city planning and development through the filter of our future. If anybody that has children or grandchildren needs to be thinking about this in terms of the longevity of this city. I was asked how many people were behind this movement, but in truth, I was all alone at that point. I didn't have popular momentum to get anything off the ground, and years later, it took Dory Larson's articulate leadership, coupled with more storms and floods, to awaken more people to the need for planned resiliency and sustainability. This whole time, I've felt that the leadership in any city means taking proactive responsibility to protect its residents, whether they understand the dangers or not. Citizens have voted this commission in, entrusting you to take care of our city now and for the future. Surely, we all see what's happening globally. Europe is flooding. Many other areas have had historical and tragic firestorms. These things aren't normal. It's no longer a luxury to create this position. It's an absolute priority to stay afloat in the future. We're believing and we're entrusting you to make the right decisions for the city and its people. And where there's a will, there's a way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Larson. My address is eighteen forty-six Lexington Place, Tarpin Springs. I am also here this evening to ask that you create and fund a full-time sustainability coordinator position. This was supposed to be item number twenty-four on tonight's agenda. I understand it's been deferred to a date uncertain, I guess. As you guys know, I've been in your shoes. I sat up there as a city commissioner from two thousand ten to two thousand sixteen. I understand that you're getting all kinds of information, opinions, facts, numbers, from a variety of sources. What I can tell you is this, during your time up there, you will end up making hundreds of votes. And I can tell you that most of the votes you make will soon be forgotten by everyone, including you. But there will be a handful that you will remember. This issue, whether or not to hire a full-time sustainability coordinator, it's one that you're going to remember in the future. I can tell you from me personally, I have some serious regrets from my time sitting up there. I know now that I didn't do enough as it relates to sustainability. While I was up there, we were trying to balance the budget after the recession, and there are always so many other projects and priorities. But now I realize that those are just excuses, and I should have tried harder. I should have done more. Worse yet, those are the same excuses that I'm hearing now. Plus, each of you have been given so much more information regarding sustainability than we ever had previously. They say, when you know more, you do better. So please do better. What will you regret? Our streets are flooding. How much longer will the Spongestocks even be a safe place to visit? We should have acted, as I said, in a decisive manner years ago, but we didn't, and we really can't wait any longer. So what we're asking for is a full-time sustainability coordinator. And to be clear, this is not a crazy or radical new idea. In fact, we are the largest city in Pinellas County, other than Pinellas Park, that doesn't have a sustainability coordinator. Members of your board have asked what this person would actually do. And I guess the concern is that there might not actually be enough work for a full-time position. To that end, your Sustainability Committee has worked on a job description. The reality is that it would take at least one full-time person just to work on the implementation of the Sustainability Action Plan that you have directed the Sustainability Committee to create. Please do not try to say that you can accomplish everything just by throwing a few sustainability buzzwords on the job descriptions of some other positions. We all know that that is just window dressing without substance. So years from now, when you look back on your time as an elected official, what will you be proud of and what will you regret? Do you honestly think that years from now, you will look back on this moment and say, "Thank goodness, we followed the lead of Pinellas Park when it comes to the planning of our future"? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Do we have any other public comments? Ms. Protus.
Good evening, our elected officials. Anita Protus, nine oh one, Bay Shore Drive. Again, I'm coming up here. This is number six. Through the years, after I got out of office and Dr. Monahan retired, please, I'm asking you to consider in this budget to hire a person who can professionally perform for the City of Tarpin Springs as a grant writer. I went through Dunedin, Safety Harbor, and areas of Clearwater. Dunedin and Safety Harbor communities are thriving because Dunedin hired who wanted to come here, and we didn't hire the person to help them because it was too much money. Then again, we didn't hire the person who went to Safety Harbor because it was too much money. They are ahead of us. You know what they have. We need to do that in Tarpin Springs. Whether you do a full-time person and give them a place here to work, or even a part-time, we are missing out on so many grants that is disgusting. Grants for historic preservation, grants for what we have across the street, grants for our library. If she was here, she could help our librarian get her grant. Grants for the hospital, grants for the whole community. Please listen, do your homework, and see it. I had spoken to Commissioner Vaticiotis way before he ever ran for Commissioner, and he agreed too that it would be good to have a grant writer for the city. But we need someone that, from Tallahassee, that knows her way around, that knows what to do, someone who is familiar with the grant program up there. to do, someone who is familiar with the grant program up there, because this was done with grants in Tarpon Springs. Everything. And we lost one of the best ones when she retired, and we need to get someone professional back in here. Please, I'm begging you, because we're losing out on too much money for our community.
Thank you.
I reside at 803 South Distance Avenue, Tarpon Springs. That's in the Union Academy neighborhood. I'm here to talk about history. Tarpon Springs has a lot of history. It was founded back in eighteen, the late eighteen hundred seventy, eighteen seventy-six or seventy-seven, but it has a lot of history. Our history was compiled by a diverse group of people, so therefore, all of our history is important. It transmits an understanding of our past to the future, and it also goes down to our children, so they will know where they came from. Our local history is much, in a way, like our national history. It has many facets. And historic preservation helps us tell all the stories from eighteen seventy-six to this present time. Sometimes, historic preservation involves celebrating events, celebrating people, places, and ideas that we are very proud of. But, but, other times, it involves recognizing moments in our history that can be painful, we are not proud of it, and uncomfortable to remember it. But it is history, and what has been done, has been done. That's why I think it's important for us to preserve all of our history in Tarpon Springs. As I said, to let future generations know what has transpired or taken place, who are our people, what some of our people did. And, sorry, and all the things that we can do today to preserve that same history so that the future generations can have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight, the population of Tarpon Springs, I looked it up today, it's twenty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty folks. Today, over nine thousand people have signed a petition circulating on change.com.org protesting against the development of the seventy-four acres on the Ann-Clove River. That's thirty-five percent of the population. Commissioners, are you listening? I don't think so, because tonight you're going to talk about not listening to the people, and how can you not listen to them? That's a travesty. This is your community. This is where we live. And, you know, I saw this mural, this beautiful mural that was done, and most of you were there. Beautiful. I think that was your mom, right? It's gorgeous. And what was it called? The Blessed Plot, The Sacred Earth. This is amazing. I don't see any big apartment buildings or high rises on this piece of property. This is our history. Like she was saying, this is it. Your mom nailed it. It's beautiful. Are you listening? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. So first of all, yeah, we need a, we need the sustainability coordinator, and we also need a grant writer in this town. But by now, I wanted to bring your attention to something you probably are already aware of, the Inspector General Report in Pinellas County in regards to the Oasis Acres Project in Lehman. So the Pinellas County Planning Director had issues during that project, and now, anyone, any developer applying for funds must now declare on paperwork whether they have a conflict of interest with the county. So I suggest we have the same rule here. You can call it the Renee Rule, because that's why they got it there. And guess what? We have her working here now, again. So any developer has to disclose any issues that they have with employees of the city. That's what we need. Otherwise, you know, any of these projects that got dirty hands on them, that's going to be disclosed in court. It's going to be discovered. There's even the appearance of ethics violations is an ethics violation. So Tarpon Springs has got problems. This isn't me talking. This is Tracy from The Times. This IG report, it's a real thing. What are you going to do about it? Business as usual? Our planning department go about business as usual? Or are you going to make everybody disclose any kind of issues they may have with a developer? I mean, already, you guys slow-walked that information. The commissioners didn't even know that the Ann-Clove Harbor project was already turned in last week. But our crack team, Peter Delacos and Carl Wagenfor, they found out the project had already been turned over, even before you guys knew. Why do you think they slow-walked that info? Why do you think the city sat on that and didn't tell you guys? Didn't tell us? So they got the information from the developer that the projects, you know, they're going to fast-walk this thing, and they tried to sneak it, just like every other thing was stuck behind everybody's backs during the holidays last year. So you can try and sneak it again? It's not going to happen. This project's not going to go through. Every time you guys try to do something underhanded, you get caught, just like she got caught, just like the developer got caught. That project ain't happening in Lehman. It's not happening. And this one ain't happening here. Well, there are several not going to happen here. We're not going to let it happen. Let's do things the right way. You know, it's just like with the Walmart. We said, "Find another site." You know what they did? They found another site. You can go to shop at Walmart right now, in the old Kmart Plaza. Everybody's happy, right? They got to build their stupid Walmart, and you guys can go shop there if you want. Nobody had to destroy any river for that, did they? And they don't have to for this project either. Make them redevelop something. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Peter Lackes, 514 Ashland Avenue. And before Irene starts the bell, I'd like to say Mr. Wagenfor and Ms. Joan Jennings have both kindly donated some time for me to be able to speak to you this evening before this is no longer available option.
Ms. Jennings, you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm having a...
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank all of those who've already come before me and spoken, and Jess' words were impactful to me, because I've been up there also. And I got to say, sometimes we have regrets. One of my biggest regrets is I drive up alternate nineteen, those little bulbous on the road that were supposed to have trees instead of having right-turn lanes. They're in the way, and nothing growing in them. And what will you regret? As Margot pointed out into this picture, twenty, thirty years from now, if this mural is updated, do you want to see an apartment building next to your faces? Will that be your regret? Now, you know I've been here before you and read passages. Last week, my theme was greed. The weeks before that was shame. But today, I went to St. Michael's, and I prayed for y'all, that you could see the light and redeem yourselves with what will be coming forth before you in the next few weeks and months. So I will begin passages first, Psalm 26, 9 through 11. Do not take away my soul along with sinners, or my life with bloodthirsty men, in whose hands are wicked schemes and whose right hands are full of bribes. But I lead a blameless life. Redeem me and be merciful to me. Psalm 103, 1 through 4. Praise the Lord, O my soul, all my innermost being. Praise his holy name. Praise the Lord, O my soul, and forget not all his benefits. Forgive all my sins and heal all my diseases. He redeems my life from the pit and crowns me with love and compassion. Psalm 107, 1 through 3. Give thanks to the Lord, for he is good. His love endures forever. Let the redeemed of the Lord say this: Those he redeemed from the hands of the foe, those he gathered from the lands from east and west, from north and south. Psalm 111, 7 through 9. The works of his hands are faithful and just. All his precepts are trustworthy. They are steadfast forever and ever, done in faithfulness and uprightness. He provided redemption for his people. He ordained his covenant forever. Holy and awesome is his name. That was 111, Psalm 130, 7 and 8. O Israel, put your hope in the Lord; for with the Lord is unfailing love, and with him is full redemption. He himself will redeem Israel from all their sins. And in my words, he can redeem you if you do the right thing, which you know what it is. Isaiah 44, 22. I have swept away your offenses like a cloud, your sins like the morning mist. Return to me, for I have redeemed you. Would you like to be redeemed? Isaiah 63, 9. In all their distress, he too was distressed. And the angel of his presence saved them. In his love and mercy, he redeemed them. He lifted them up and carried them all the days of old. Are you ready to be carried forth? Jeremiah 15, 21. I will save you from the hands of the wicked and redeem you from the grasp of the cruel. You have an opportunity ahead of you to redeem yourself in front of the citizens of Tarpon Springs. Lamentations 3, 55, 58. I called on your name, O Lord, from the depths of the pit. You heard my plea. Do not close your ears to my cry for relief. You came near when I called you, and you said, "Do not fear." O Lord, you took up my case, and you redeemed my life. All of you have a chance for redemption. Lastly, Luke 21, 28. When things begin to take place, stand up and lift up your heads, because your redemption is drawing near. So how do you want to be remembered? As Ms. Sanger mentioned, transitions. As former Commissioner Larson mentions, regrets. When you leave your seats there, what will you be remembered for? What do you want to be remembered for? The destruction of seventy-four acres? Eagle's Nest, Gofer Tortoises, homes to waiting birds, Sand Hill cranes, Woodstorks? Is that going to be your legacy? Or will you stand up and listen to the citizens and the people of the area that have let you know how they feel? As Ms. Lizer mentioned, and I'm sure y'all have gotten the updates from change.org, as more and more people become aware, they are voicing to you how you're going down the wrong path. You have the ability to redeem yourself at this fork in the road by choosing the correct path for us, the citizens of Tarpon Springs, and your own legacy. Thank you.
Mike Geisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. I think we've heard quite a few comments being made about the sustainability position, and I don't want to belabor the issue, but I'm not sure you all realize why I even came to Tarpon Springs in the first place. I am a retired first responder, which I think I've mentioned once or twice before. I've gotten to watch what happens in Hurricane Irene. I lived through Hurricane Sandy. I lost my house in Hurricane Sandy. It was one of the most devastating things you could ever see. What I don't want to see is that we go through a situation similar to what I went through, because being a first responder, you get to see the heartache of people losing their possessions. And I'm not saying that there's something that a sustainable, sustainability person can stop a hurricane, but we have to be as prepared as we could possibly be. So all I would say to you is, this is the time to make the right decision. It's a full-time job. If you don't know what that job pertains to, we have it now in writing. And believe me when I tell you, I watched that firsthand. I didn't sleep for days... I didn't sleep for days. I worked like a dog to try to help people out. And I will continue to work to make sure that this town stays as safe as possible. Thank you for listening.
Any other public comments?
Panayotis Kulyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. And Annie Samarcus will be donating her time.
Say yes.
I just want to start off from some of the items that we deferred. I understand, Mayor, you sent an email saying that there's a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight, but I feel like we pulled away some of the most important items. A lot of the items that we were talking about relate to sustainability, our stormwater action plan. I'm actually happy to see that we have an action plan and how soon it's going to be meshed together with the strategic strategy to attack it all. As far as, you know, this option with this sustainability, why are we running away from this topic? It's not going anywhere. More and more credible people are coming up speaking about it. They're coming every week. They're vocal. It's a great thing to see because they're just looking out for their kids, their grandkids. They're looking out for the future of Tarpon Springs. It's not about us anymore. I don't know about you, but I lived a great life growing up as a kid. And we've got to make sure everything's sustainable, our infrastructure, everything for the future and whatever it holds. We can't, we can't attract more business. We can't sustain a slow-growth population without a true infrastructure plan. And that involves a sustainability coordinator. And I hope everybody's really paying attention to the strategic strategy that's coming up with USF and SPC. This is one of the biggest building blocks on our dashboard on many issues that need to be addressed in town. And we've heard from Ms. Chris before. We've got to have one hired. We have to have a sustainability coordinator hired before April of 2022, that we have the proper people in place to implement and facilitate the strategy. So I can only stress it so much. Please, let's not run away from this topic anymore. I mean, what's, what's the worst that can happen? We address the issue, we figure out our costs, and we find a way to balance the budget, get them in there. All these grants is going to help us long-term, and we really care about the future of Tarpon Springs. We need to address this issue and hire one as soon as possible. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Here none, thank you. We are now going to the consent agenda. Item number two is the attorney fees. Johnson and Johnson invoice 8085. Number three is special events, back-to-school PASH and ECO Fest. Number five is the award bid number 210161, BAM golf cart leasing. Number six is to authorize execution of quitclaim D with Eastman reservation from Duke Energy for right-of-way at Huey Avenue and Tarpon Avenue. Number seven is to authorize execution of license agreement with CG National Name Change Camp Gladiator. And number eight is to authorize execution of the 70 submerged lanes fee waiver lease rental for the City Marina. Are there any items that you'd like to pull? Any items that you'd like to pull? Here none, thank you. We go into the public comments on the items 2 through 8, with the exception of four that was deferred. Any public comments on these items?
Panayotis Kulyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. And I will have Annie Samarcus donate two minutes of her time.
You've got six minutes.
Now, I'm looking at the golf course. I've repeatedly talked about, one of the biggest ways to improve our city's income is to restore the golf course. I'm looking at the golf course golf cart rentals that are not to exceed about $68,000 a year. That comes out to about $75 a month per cart for the next three years, which actually is a really good number. But what can we do to improve our golf course? And I think it's really, we really need to start considering what we're going to do with the clubhouse, if we're going to renovate it or completely knock it down, build something bigger, build something that's more inviting for a restaurant to come lease, five, 10 years at a time. We've got to get a liquor license out there. That way, we can drive up revenues. You could have banquets. You could have these rotary clubs. They would run out, they would run out the hall over there several times. I mean, you could have wedding receptions there. There's plenty of things. If you actually built a nice clubhouse in the future, that can generate long-term income for our city and for that golf course. There should be no reason why, looking at those numbers that we're in a deficit, which I firmly don't believe, but the golf cart cost per month is actually a really good price. And let's think about ways to increase revenue in our city and renovating our golf club and doing all that is one of the biggest things in the future.
Any other public comments on consent agenda? Here none. The chair will detain a motion.
Second.
Any commission comments, questions? Yes, sir.
Just want to mention, I spoke to Mr. Smith, there he is, over there, about the golf cart lease, and I just couldn't believe that we got it for the same price as the previous lease. And I think that's a phenomenal job in getting that lease for three years at the same price that we just paid, finished up with three years. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tiarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzas?
Yes. We go into the special consent agenda. Item number nine is the award bid, number 210162, B J L Electric Motor and Pump Repair Service. Staff report, please.
Good evening. Paul Smith, Public Services Director, sitting in a different seat here tonight, but I'll be responding to this item. This is an important service for all of our utilities. This item isn't just restricted to the wastewater plant or the RO plant. It's for all of our operations, including our lift stations that move the sewage to the treatment plant. Very important infrastructure. And through our procurement process, we've gotten recent bids. And as many things have gone up in price, this has as well. So we've come up with an approach to try to minimize that effect. There's three bidders that submitted contract pricing. We're recommending to award to all three so that we can pull from different line items of the different bids to get the best prices for the city. So that's what's in front of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Need a motion?
So moved? Second.
Are there any commission comments, questions? Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, good evening. You mentioned that we'll be selecting all three of the responders this evening. I was just wondering, that's kind of out of the ordinary on a bid like this for the, for the edification of the public. Could you just elaborate a little bit?
Yes, Commissioner. We've got three bidders that do this type of work. It's a specialty service where they come out and these pumps are large and heavy, and they will pull the equipment, bring it back to their shop, rewind motors, rebuild pumps so that we can use them again. Just a general rule of thumb, we'll try to reuse pumps as many times as we can, the housings, so that we save money. And these companies do those services. And what we found with the bids is depending on, you know, we listed all the different types of pumps and motors we have throughout our utility, and they all bid on each of those line items. And we found a range of prices, some cheaper in some areas, others cheaper in others. So instead of just taking one, we're recommending all three so we could pick from whatever types of motors we're working on. If it makes sense, we could select one of those contractors at the best price.
So you have, from a procurement perspective, already predetermined which contractor is specifically going to work in a certain area of expertise?
Well, we went out to broadcast all those things, and those are the three major players in the area that responded.
Thank you.
Any other commission comments?
No, I did have also a conversation with Mr. Smith on this. And the one thing we didn't talk about, it's not one contract. It's three contracts, one for each of the vendors. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it's a level-of-service contract. And I'm sure you've done a good job as far as keeping tabs on what's what. And I think it's as much, not just the skill level, but the availability of who can be there when we need them. So it's a nice backup to have as well.
Thank you. That's, that's correct. I'd like to acknowledge procurement as well. They're a great partner for us in doing all this legwork, so we appreciate it.
One last question. I don't know if Mr. Herring is here. Do we just encumber $350,000 on that? Or do we encumber three times that amount if we do it this way? Or do we encumber $350,000 at all?
No, what they will do is as they're procuring services, they will procure those amounts during the life of the contract.
And how do we make the adjustment through a budget resolution to?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
To the respective departments.
I just have a quick question, Mayor. Paul, so how many times can you rebuild a motor typically?
Usually what we've seen, the rule of thumb here, but about two times. The third time, you usually have to get a new one.
Okay. And how do you know you rebuilt them?
We actually have a system where we spray paint certain color dots on different ones for how many times they've been rebuilt.
Great. What's the price difference between like rebuilt motor and a brand-new one? Is it pretty significant?
It's a big difference. You know, that's why we're motivated to rebuild wherever we can. This contract's a real money saver. It can be a factor of five to 10 times, depending on the pump.
Yeah, that's significant. I appreciate your leadership in this. Thanks.
Mr. Smith, this more is operating very critical parts of our facilities, the water plant, the sewer plant. Do we have spares on the shelf in the case of an emergency? Any standby motors to use in case something happens on the weekend or holidays?
Yes, Mayor. In fact, the next item on the agenda is addressing that as well. But to your point, when we get pumps rebuilt, it's not just putting it right back in the hole to work. We've got some in storage that can be immediately put in service so that we can take that one that broke down out, because it'll take a few weeks to get redone.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tiarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzas?
Okay. Next is item number 10, increase file number 210091, N J L Segro Source Purchase of Flowserve Pump Parts and Accessories. Staff report versus Smith.
Good evening. Paul Smith, Public Services Director. This item, we're asking your authorization to increase this particular year with this vendor to provide some important shelf spares for specific treatment plant equipment. And this includes the feed pump for the RO facility and also some well pumps. We tried to be very selective in which pieces of equipment we're recommending to keep the cost down, but these are things that require many, many weeks to procure. And our water system really can't wait that long to, for a spare part to come in. So we've been asked a question before, will it keep if it's on the shelf for several years? And that's something I did want to address, that yes, this equipment can be on the shelf for several years until we use it, but it's definitely something you want there when you need it.
Good idea. Are there any public comments on this item?
Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. Just a quick question. Are these pumps rebuildable?
Some of these are, but some of them aren't.
Don't answer questions there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
So that was?
Comments, we'll get to you later.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item? Need a motion?
So moved? Second.
Roll call. Any commission comments?
Just have a quick one. Paul, this, this is already budgeted in the water plan and the water fees, right? So there's nothing new that additional cost, right?
That's correct. We have capital line items for this type of thing.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just a question, just a question to clarify. I know in the backup it notes, a failure of one pump would render one of the RO trains inoperable for an average of 155 working days. How common is a failure of a, of a pump?
It's only a matter of time. I mean, we do run them until they won't run anymore, basically. So it will happen. Good point. It's not real often, but it, all it takes is just one breakdown, and then you're out of business.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tiarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzas?
Yes. Item number 11 is review file number 160016, CRS Dell Computers through the Florida State Contract Number 43211500, WSCA 15ACS. Staff report?
Suzanne Linton, your Director of Information Technology. This is a contract that is specific to equipment for Dell, computers, servers, printers, any peripherals. And this is a high-end, the $200,000 is in the event of an emergency situation that might happen. That should cover everything for the year that we do need. So does anyone have any questions?
No. We can, we need to go to public comments when you finish with the presentation. Finished?
Yes, I'm finished.
Yeah. Are there any public comments on this item? No public comments? Need a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Commission comments?
Question. Suzanne, does this include the maintenance as well for the servers? Or is that an additional cost? Or does it come with maintenance for a certain amount of years? I don't recall.
It comes with maintenance for a certain amount of years. It's usually three to five years.
Okay.
This does not include the maintenance. If we were to extend.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Suzanne, would you take a few minutes and tell us about the maintenance program that you have in regards to computers and routers?
Sure. Every piece of equipment that we purchase, we, we always get the full three- to five-year maintenance warranty. But this equipment that we do purchase is so industrial that it usually lasts longer than the maintenance period. So we, we typically keep the equipment as long as we can, that, you know, as long as it's safe and secure. And we fix it ourselves, all the equipment. If something breaks, a hard drive goes out, we repair the hard drive. This has afforded us the opportunity to purchase our equipment other than lease, because we do a study yearly, and we look at how much it would cost to purchase this equipment outright, other than lease it for the amount of years that we have had this equipment. And every year, we have found that it far outweighs, it's so much more beneficial to purchase it outright than to lease the equipment. So the maintenance agreements, when they do run out, we in IT maintain the equipment after that initial period.
We are very fortunate. We've got capable technicians to be able to do that.
Yes, we are.
Any other commission comments, questions?
I just wanted to point out, Ms. Linton provided some excellent backup that is on your desk this evening. I don't think it's in the, in the public backup for a variety of reasons, but the amounts that has been spent on this particular contract since 2015, I believe, is when we first put it in place, has been getting progressively lower. It's an excellent trend. I'd like to think that it continues lower, but I know we're going to bottom out at some point. But it went from the first year of $142,000 down to last year to $56,000, and we're contracting for $200,000. So I, I think that's a pretty good job. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tiarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzas?
Yes. Item number 12 is to approve sidewalk improvement program. Staff report?
Good evening. Tom Function, Public Works Director. We are preparing to implement the biannual sidewalk improvement program. Attached, you'll find a computer completely prioritized listing based on the technical criteria. Of course, we recommend the work be done in the order of the prioritized list. Also, in your backup is a copy, an example of how we evaluate each sidewalk, along with that list. With that list in your backup, you'll see that there's approximately 44 sidewalks we've evaluated. The money that we have funded for here, of course, is $100,000 of the road program, plus the other $100,000 that you graciously gave us through the sidewalk fund. Thank you very much for that. The first 30 are about approximately what we feel we can be able to get done, based on the last contract we had. Of course, the rest of the sidewalks, should something, either we're able to stretch it out a little bit longer or something along that list for some other reason has to be bumped out, we'll file that prioritized list and get hopefully all the way down. But the whole list is actually approximately about $280,000. So we have some, some we have to make adjustments as we go along.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any public comments on this item?
Panetti School, Yass, 595 Peninsula Avenue. Annie Smarcus will be donating her time. I'm looking at this list right now, and I don't know if someone can point to me. Tarpon Avenue, all the sidewalks leading from Ring going east all the way to US-19. I don't know when this renovation happened. I believe over a decade ago. But we got to readdress those sidewalks. I mean, it's half cement and it's half brick, but it's a short distance. It's barely three and a half feet, four feet wide. And it, the bricks starting to fall apart. The bricks run east to west. So as they're crumbling off the sidewalk, it makes it more difficult for somebody in a wheelchair to go along the sidewalk. A lot of the bricks across that area, and as well from Orange Street going north on Alternate 19, look very faded. And I know there was some renovation done not too long ago. So I don't know why the bricks look the way they look. They look a little, just doesn't look right now. You look at Ring Avenue, going west towards Alt-19, there's plenty of sidewalk where the half cement, half brick looks good. It balances out because there's enough width on both of them. So we need to address the sidewalks down Tarpon Avenue on both sides. Should either do all brick or all cement, because it just doesn't look good right now. Another way to create more walkability, it was actually up north over the weekend. I see that a lot of the trees that they have on the side of the sidewalks, and just depends on the size of the tree. On the bottom of them, they actually got the metal grates that are cut in half, so that way you can pull them off. And they actually have screens, holes right through them, so you can water the plants. It actually gives you more walkability where you have trees and sidewalks around certain areas. So something to think about in the near future. And Tarpon Avenue, we're talking about walkability and stuff. I remember the medians being installed in Tarpon Avenue. I will say that it's created very tight roadway going east and west on both sides. Where some of the medians are put, it makes it hard for people to pull into their own businesses. For example, Theophylopolis Law. The medians put right next to the guy's driveway going in. And you have to take the sharpest turn to go back west. And it just doesn't make sense where some of these medians are. Sometimes less is more. We need to figure out that opening up our city in certain areas creates more walkability, more visibility. And the sidewalks on Tarpon Avenue need to be addressed as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Here now? Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Function. Benefit of the public, would you please explain the criteria that you use to prioritize the projects?
Sure. We have a list that we actually have, one gentleman at the last number of years does this evaluation. That way, we're consistent every year, so we don't get, well, look over it, different looks at it. We have actually police reports, citizens accident reports, trip hazards, cracks, dips, raises, as you've seen some of the sidewalks, how many homes and services, a density, pedestrian traffic, of course, and then ADA requirements. And then, of course, our biggest priority is safe passage to schools. That's our number one. So we gather those listings. We go out, we walk them, we look at their locations, and then we score them. And then the score actually dictates which ones need to be put on the list.
So you have a fair system?
Yes, sir.
One more question in regard, on your spreadsheet, you have many projects. You think you're going to be completing at least 30 projects this year, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us a little bit about the funding? I know that we budgeted $100,000. We also have the sidewalk fund. Would you explain to the public how that works?
Sure. Well, actually, there was, for years, we've done $100,000 every other year. It's a biannual program, odd years. We had up to $100,000 almost every year, a little bit more a couple of years ago. And then the board graciously approved last year that they would take, match whatever money we put up with an additional $100,000. That's why this is the first time we've had almost $200,000 worth of funds. As far as, was there another part of that question? Excuse me, I missed it, Mayor.
That was it.
That was it.
How the fund works.
Sure.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments on this item?
Got a couple, too.
Go ahead. You first.
Mr. Function, thanks for being here tonight. So after tonight, you will complete within a year or so, 1 through 30?
It will be sooner than that. We're looking, hopefully, to actually piggyback off the last contract. I'm working with Procurement, seeing if that's possible. The reason why we would like to piggyback, of course, as everyone knows, is the concrete's going up pretty quick. So if we can utilize the piggyback contract, I should be able to get all 30 of these fairly easily, and hopefully within the next month or two.
Wow. So 1 through 30, I don't have my calculator, but 1 through 30 is about 200 grand?
It's about $190,000, you know, give or take. Again, you won't know until you actually get down with the contractor and he walks in and gives us some other looks at it. But we should get the 30 in there, no problem.
Got you. I just have two areas to mention to you that you can take a look at, whoever you have assigned to this.
Yes.
If you're on Riverside Drive and you've crossed the yacht club heading to the beaches, when you get to Riverside and Park Avenue, and then Riverside and Kramer Drive, maybe, there's no sidewalk at all to cross from Riverside and Park and then on to, through Kramer and then back on Riverside, if you can take a look at that.
Sure. I'd be happy, that section there is actually county. I'd be happy to press them to get it done.
Yeah, get them to take care of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
I can piggyback on that one. I worked with the county on that one a couple of years ago, and it's actually private property. I think it's Ms. Diamandis's property. So someone from the city will have to work with her to see if, but she was not interested at the time to give the county any permission to put any sidewalks across her property where Park and Kramer come across. So there could be some things that we need to maybe set up with a, Tom, a meeting with a private resident and maybe the city manager or one of the commissioners to talk about further. But yeah, that's a heavily needed area from a safety perspective. It's just a cluster of an intersection as well, with like four different roads coming in together, right? I do want to also continue with the Riverside discussion. If you continue west down Riverside, past Tarpon Drive and past Glades, Glades, maybe, I don't know, maybe 50 feet, the sidewalk stops on the north side of Riverside. And then there's no sidewalk from there to Seminole. If we could add that to the list as well, I think that's an important part. It's a busy road, just to have that. Again, it's a future. I'm not asking for it to be done right away, but I think it's something that we want to add to the list as well. And then one of the important things, too, is in the past, the city, you mentioned it a couple of times, Tom, is that you're allowed to tap in $100,000 in the sidewalk fund.
Yes.
So there's a significant amount of money in the sidewalk fund, just to give you a little more background behind it. And the city could use the interest each year out of the sidewalk fund to build sidewalks. Well, the issue is that there's a couple million dollars in this account, and the interest rates are basically negative at this point. So there's no money coming out of maybe $20,000 a year out of this fund. And then there's also the penny fund that has been in place now for many years as well, too, that you can use for capital projects. So the Charter Committee agreed that it would be a good idea to slowly take the money out of the sidewalk fund over the next however many years. It's probably 20 years, because it's $100,000 a year. With that, it gives the city more funding to do more projects quicker. So I was in full support of it then. I'm happy to see that we're moving forward now and getting more sidewalks in the city for our pedestrians and safety increases. So appreciate it.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and all your work on this. I know it's tough coordinating it. I really like the rubric. I think it considers, you know, all the priorities that one would when determining where to put a sidewalk. My only question is just, how do we come up with the rubric? Is it, you know, self-imposed? Is that just something we decided, hey, that sounds like a good rubric? I see it was revised last August.
Yeah, it's evolved over the years. My first guy here was a much simpler form over here. So as we got more experience here doing it, we've just made the changes along. I know that a number of years ago, the school started pushing the heavy safe passage to schools over there. And that was a big leader of actually helping us clean this up and get it a little more particular to each site.
Okay, yeah. No, I think that's really the wisest consideration in terms of proximity to schools. My question is, it says elementary or middle. Do we not consider high school?
Yes. High schools are much further guidance over here. The closer you are to the school, the more intense it is with middle schools and the high schools are much further walking distance. We do consider them without a doubt. But by the time we get to what they require, it's pretty much out of most of our areas anyhow.
Okay, so we don't currently consider high school?
No, but it falls into the other schools anyhow, but most.
Yeah, I know how close they are, especially Sunset. That would just be something that I would add on there, is the high school. Just given that it's our largest school in terms of student population, and you also got kids walking there when it's still dark outside. So I know it's kind of nitpicking, but I would just add the high school, even though I know Sunset kind of is the placeholder for that. But other than that, I really like the list, and thank you again.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Vaticiotis, any comments?
I do. I spoke to Mr. Function about this earlier today. And the criteria that he has hits on specific sidewalks and problems, either through the police or people calling or whatever. But I think at some point, we need to look at it one level higher. And Mayor, you mentioned the fairness issue. I think last time, maybe two years ago, we had a map. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right? We don't have one this time. I'm not asking for one, not for tonight anyway. But that kind of gave us an idea of where the focus was on our sidewalk program. And in looking, and I asked Mr. Function to provide the previous four years as well. And the reason why it's biannual, of course, is because we do street paving and resurfacing in, on the odd years in between that. So I think that next time, we should probably have a map to look at as far as the backup goes. And also, even before it gets to us, to kind of see where the focus has been over the last four years. And perhaps there is a forgotten part of town, Young's Deluxe, the northeast quadrant from Tarpon Avenue, North Pinellas, out towards Live Oak, that area. Has, and my point is that there is no shortage of problems with sidewalks around town. That's all. And we do have Tarpon Elementary in that area as well.
Yes.
So, thank you, Mr. Function.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuesas.
Yes. The item number 13 is to authorize execution of agreement with the state of Florida for a grant to develop a eruption resiliency plan to the city historic and Greek Town District. Staff report, I think Ms. Vincent?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Renee Vincent, Planning Director. Yes, the purpose of this agenda item is to ask the board to authorize the city to go in, enter into a contract with the state of Florida, specifically the Division of Historic Resources, to execute a grant that we applied for back in June that we did receive for, to develop an adaptation and resiliency strategy, plan and set of strategies for our recognized historic districts, you know, the local, the national, and the Greek Town Historic Districts. And this really came about as, because of a follow-on. If you recall, earlier this year, I believe in February, we adopted, officially adopted, an updated set of design guidelines for the historic district. And while that did focus on and provide additional guidelines for things like wind mitigation and flooding, specifically with relation to flood mitigation as it relates to historic structures, you know, it really, what we have now is really more emphasizes, emphasizes what not to do versus providing a set of tools and strategies for homeowners, contractors, and the city as to preserve those structures for the long haul. So we're anticipating utilizing University of Florida to do this work. And we are coordinating with the Pinellas County, and they're doing some similar historic work throughout the entire county, identifying vulnerable historic assets, starting with, from the 1970s and going back. So we are included as part of that, that overall survey. So there'll be some overlap between what the county's doing and what we're doing. So with that, I'll try to answer any additional questions you two might have. And this is a non-matching grant. It's 100% funded by the state.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, we're going to go to our public comments on this item. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now?
Andy's coming up there.
I'm Annie Dabs, 803 South Distanced Avenue. I wanted to ask, with the two entities mentioned, if that, the Union Academy neighborhood could be included? That's what I'm requesting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comments on this item? No more comments? Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Vincent, got a question to ask you, if you don't mind, please.
Sorry.
You say this is not a matching fund, so we get $50,000. What's the process of hiring a consultant? And how he's going to, or she's going to help us to give us ideas what to do and how to do it in these two areas?
We generally, you know, you can either go out for requests for proposals and provide, you know, the scope of services to be rendered and accept proposals. In this instance, we have reached out directly to the University of Florida, because they have professionals on staff that already do this type of work. The county is already working with the University of Florida as well. So we did verify with the state Division of Historical Resources[1685.04] So we did verify with the state Division of Historical Resources that they will accept, and they are, agree with us using University of Florida for this task. They're familiar with the individuals there. And so at this point, our intent is to use them to perform the scope of work.
Okay, so we're going to be working with county together?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Dabs had a question about if Union Academy area is going to be included into that. Is that part of the historical area?
The, it's not specifically included because it's not an identified historic district for us. So when we wrote the grant, it wasn't included at that point in time. I will say that the county's vulnerability assessment that they're doing countywide, and the city actually is named as a specific focal point along with St. Petersburg and one additional municipality, I can't remember who it is right now, that to take a deeper dive with what the county is doing. So the assets will certainly get identified as part of what the county is doing. And then we can, you know, we can take that and, you know, I feel like most of what would come out of looking at these particular districts could probably be applied to that, to that area if we move forward with some sort of, you know, official program or things like that. So it's not officially in, but the results of it certainly would be applicable to, not just to the, to the historic districts that are identified, but other historic homes in the city.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr?
Hey Renee, thank you for bringing this up. It's great to see another grant that has been awarded to your department. How many grants is this now that's been awarded to the department? I believe it was Historic Preservation, or the Historic Guidelines was one.
Historic Guidelines, excuse me, of course. This grant and then the
Ford Pinellas?
The Ford Pinellas Distin Complete Streets Concept Planning Grant.
Hey Paul, I think she's beaten you on the grants. So you've got some catching up to do here with Renee's name.
But he has much bigger ticket grants.
Not so fast. We've got a grant coming in ourselves.
Great, okay, good. Well, these grants are great to see, also partnerships with the universities as well. We're working with the University of Florida here, it looks like, and the University of South Florida with a comprehensive and strategic plan. It's nice seeing the universities being involved here. I'm sure Florida State and UCF feel like they're left out a little bit, but I'm sure they'll get involved somehow at some point with the city. So thank you for your leadership with this, Renee, and pushing us to do the study for no cost to our residents.
Do we have any other commission comments, questions?
Time frame?
It's a one-year, which started July 1st, so we have until July 1st of next year to complete, to complete the work.
Would that, to some extent, synchronize with what the county is doing?
It is.
Well, I'd like to consider including whatever, and this is Tom Schofield's work at the county, okay. And I know he and Ms. Dabs
Tom and Hank Harty, yeah.
And I know he and Ms. Dabs have communicated as well. And I know he's very cooperative. If possible, so we don't lose the data or the information. If we could include whatever the county does for the Union Academy neighborhood as an appendix to our report, since it's being done by the same organization, should be easy enough.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alouzis?
Yes. Item number fifteen is the authorization for city manager to sign DR 420 forms. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. As part of the budget process for fiscal year 2022, there is the setting of the millage rate. Florida statute 200.2.065 sets the procedures for the adoption of the millage rate. The DR 420 forms which are attached establishes the maximum millage rate for fiscal year 2022. We're recommending to authorize a city manager to sign the form DR 420 at the maximum millage rate of 5.37, which is the current millage rate. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Are there any public comments on this item? Are there any public comments on this item? I hear none. We need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Eric. Just for clarification, the DR 420, DR 420 TIF and the MMP is the maximum millage is 5.37. But we can lower that if we want to, correct?
Yes, we can lower it from the 5.37. You can't go above it, though. You can't go above it once you set the maximum.
All right, just lower.
Yes.
Any questions? No questions. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alouzis?
Yes. Okay, we're going to, item number sixteen is the settlement of Mears Crossing LLC versus the seat of Tarpon Springs. City Attorney, please present this item.
Mayor Commissioners, in front of you is a memorandum. It's been also in your agenda package. This is a memorandum for my partner Jay Danyo as litigation counsel for the city of Tarpon Springs. This is a follow-up to the executive session that occurred on July 1st, 2021. We have a settlement offer that we're asking authorization for the city to accept. Attached to the memorandum is the settlement agreement that's being proposed to be signed. This has been negotiated between the attorneys, both representing the city and also Mears Crossing LLC. You remember, a portion of this lawsuit is dealing with the work that the city asked, Mears Crossing LLC to complete in addition to the roadwork requirements that they had pursuant to the funding agreement that was signed a number of years ago. The actual work that was done for the city and you're obligated to pay is $347,166.51. In order to settle this case, the Florida League of Cities, the insurance carrier, actually the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust is also contributing $300,000 to settle this litigation. In addition to that, it will require $52,833.49 to meet the $700,000 settlement figure. In the audience tonight is one of the attorneys from our office, actually two attorneys from our office, Nancy Meyer. She's here to answer questions about the settlement agreement, the litigation itself, if you have any. And also in the back row is another lawyer from her law firm, Jerry Mees Simon. He's just watching to see what goes on at a Tarpon Springs commission meeting. So if you have any questions, either I or Nancy will be able to handle those, hopefully. But we're asking for your authority to sign this settlement agreement. And by the way, we've already received the $300,000 from the league. It's in our trust account at the office.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
Panayotis Kulyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. And Annie Samarcus will be donating two minutes over time.
Where's she at?
Not here.
She's not here? Kid?
Anybody else? Ms. J.
She has to be here.
These are all my own thoughts and expressions. By the time she walks back up here, she'll, I'll get her minutes. Thank you. And these are these are my own thoughts and expressions again. We're looking at, is this Mears Crossing Ikaria Apartments? Can someone answer that? Thank you, Mr. Carr. Now, this is one of the biggest blunders going back to decades ago, where even some commissioners regret that they approved it. We took away a lot of, you know, off their wetlands. I don't know what they were, but you guys all saw the video of me running down Pinellas, the Pinellas Trail, and you saw that seven, eight-foot gator just sitting there getting in the sun, you know, sitting in the sun right on the trail. And if I hadn't been walking, running, looking towards that area, who knows? It could have ran right up on me. So you guys have the video, you've seen what we've taken away from sensitive areas. And now we're out of our pocket, 700K. Well, at least 350 we're not, but this goes down as a blunder. I mean, I look back at the lawsuit from Mears Crossing and I'm looking at the phases. Phase one was basically to the Pinellas Trail. Phase three, which was already completed, goes all the way to Distin Avenue from the Pinellas Trail. And phase two is not even started yet. I mean, I did see some pipes across the side over there. So I don't know how we skipped phase two and then went to phase three. There was a lot of issues from that road from the beginning with the city not being fully transparent. And right here, the city knew that phase three of the Mears Road Extension Project went through and overgrown former city landfill on the city-owned property, which was unknown to the developer. The city did not disclose potential for environmental issues on the city-owned property within the scope of the project. Now, we all know this is one of our city manager's biggest projects from the time in the back of the PowerPoint. The landfill was a concern. I mean, the community over there was calling it Sinkhole Lane, Sinkhole Alley, because we remember Mr. Warren speaking about when they were dropping the metal disc, how its foundation of his house was starting to shake. So who gets the fault here? Who are we going to point the finger at? I mean, I know no one's not going to get fired over this. We've lost hundreds of thousands, if not millions, in dollars from just not following up on things, not trying to get grants, not trying to apply for things, and doing our due diligence. So I like Mr. Trask, but I don't know, is it an attorney issue that overlooked it? Was it city management issue that caused this? Because the whole occupancy thing, once we issued the certificates, Mears Crossing is not happy. And what are we going to do? Where does this money come from, the other $350,000 that we could, where does that get pulled out of? I'd like to hear maybe from Mr. Herring, our finance director, and what would that money actually be used for if we didn't have to pay for this lawsuit? So there's another 170, there's another 700K when it comes to lawsuits that we as taxpayers are paying out of our pocket for projects that just aren't managed as good as they should. I mean, was delayed big time. And I'm going right back to phase two, Mango Street down to US 19. People want to open up Distin Road. We can't do that, guys. We got a lot of issues. We got to fix these roads first and then check out their feasibility studies. We got to protect all neighborhoods. Doesn't matter if you're over by the Sail Harbor community or if you're over off Harrison Street or Oakleaf. We got to protect these communities, got to be able to make sure we have the traffic and the sustainability around all that. So I'm disappointed, you know. And I wish that the people of Tarpon Springs would be made aware about this on a bigger scale. We've seen other projects that have gone silent or people use scapegoats. And I really would like somebody up here today to take the blame for it. Say, hey, it was our fault, our guidance, our misnegligence on how we proceeded with this project. And I mean, no one's going to get fired for it. We already know that. So let's just do the right thing, admit one of us were wrong. And that way, we don't cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars again on developments with developers and not being able to, on our end, fulfill our needs with these developers. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments on this item? Here none? The chair will retain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Well, this item was discussed during the executive session back in July 2021. So I don't have anything else to add to that. Any, any public comments? I mean, any commission comments?
Got just a quick one, Mayor.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor Carr.
Just for clarity, 350,000 of this was work that the city asked the developer to do. That's in addition to the agreed-upon agreement. So that was $350,000 of additional. So it's like a new lane, some additional things along the road, right? The League of Cities pays $300,000 for the, through the insurance carrier. The city has a $25,000 deductible, is my understanding. And then the city needs to come up with the 52,000. So we're looking at 52,000 plus 25, we're at $72,000. The developer came to the city back, I don't remember when it was, August of last year, October, August, I think it was, and said if they were to get a temporary occupational license or with a CO certificate of occupancy, they would be able, they would, they ultimately wouldn't be suing the city. They still wanted the $350,000. At the time, the board couldn't come to an agreement with the developer. So the developer then moved forward with the lawsuit. So at that time, the commission could have made this work. At the end of the day, the commission's now out with the city, $77,000. I do think we had an opportunity to make it right at that point with a small gesture of a temporary CO with one of the buildings. That didn't happen. Again, it was a majority of the board rules. So it's kind of a lesson learned, I think, for the board. I'm not happy about the 77,000, nor the 300,000 that the Florida League of Cities has to put up through our insurance policy. But this is the best-case scenario based on our attorneys and what was explained to us in their work session. So, thank you.
Any other commission comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alouzis?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are now going to the ordinance and resolutions. Item number 17 and item number 18 are quasi-judicial. Item number 17 is a resolution 2021-40, the application 2167, conditional use for restaurant at 227 East Lemon Street. City Attorney, if you please read the title and explain the quasi-judicial process.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution 2021-40, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number 21-67, requesting a conditional use permit to allow the establishment of a restaurant at 227 East Lemon Street, located in the north side of East Lemon Street between South Safford Avenue and South Ring Avenue in the four, I'm sorry, in the T4B transect of the special area plan, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. That was the reading of Resolution 2021-40 by title only. I'll read the quasi-judicial procedure for this particular agenda item. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria containing the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Those are the procedures that will be used for these next two hearings. Anyone that's going to speak on these agenda items, if you could stand up, raise your right hand. I'm going to swear you under oath. Anyone that's going to speak, please. Raise your right hand. Swear that the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Ms. Vincent, do you want to make a presentation?
Mayor Commissioners, I believe you did receive an email from Mr. Andrew Otis, who is the applicant on the first application tonight. He cannot be here, so I would like to know if you want to move forward with the hearing or if you want to defer it. That is at your discretion. He did not ask for it to be deferred.
Got no problem.
I don't know the rest of the year, but we should go forward with that. It's very
No problem with me to keep it.
Everybody's okay with it? We'll go forward with it.
All right, thank you. This is application 21-67. This is a conditional use application within our smart code area for a restaurant in this particular transect district on Lemon Street. Restaurants are conditional use, so the applicant is, for now, just applying for the conditional use to, before they move forward with, you know, investing in site plan improvements and parking. So they think they wanted to get an initial read that this was going to be a go. This is, the property is at 227 East Lemon. I think most people know this is the old Smearless Bakery site. And you can see the property here. I've already covered this. Included with this is also another piece of property to the north. It's just south of Johnny's Tap House. And this is a vacant lot that they do intend to improve for parking to be provided for the restaurant. And that will come back for site plan approval at a later date. This is the survey of the property. Just, the property, the building itself is about 2,800 square feet on two floors. It's in a pretty decent state of disrepair as we speak. This is a concept plan. This is not the applicant's concept plan. This was the owner, previous owners or the existing owner that's selling the property. But it does show adding back the porches, excuse me, I didn't mean to flip that, adding the porches back and providing outdoor seating, which is consistent with the applicant's intent. Here's some pictures of the building as it looks today. You know, the, both, the porches are gone and it's boarded up and secured. Under the conditional use review criteria, we define that it's consistent with the land development code and the smart code. It's appropriate to the property in question and compatible with the area and consistent with the comprehensive plan. This actually will provide a positive impact on, this is a historical property, so it will be restored. So, and obviously, we'll have to meet our design guidelines and go through this historic preservation board for those improvements. We don't, this actually would be a positive impact on property values. This is an infill property that's existing so that we don't have to extend any additional utilities to serve it. And it does provide for efficient early development. Staff recommendation is to approve Resolution 21-40, granting conditional use approval for the operation of a restaurant use in the T4B transect. for the operation of a restaurant used in the T4B transect. We are recommending an additional condition. Number one is our standard condition. Number two, we do want to make sure that was clear to the public and in the public record that under the smart code, the restaurant seating is limited to 49 seats unless an approval for an expansion based on available parking. So, at a time in the future when the parking is addressed and they come back with a site plan, at that time, you know, we can consider, based on available parking, increasing that seating above 49. But right now, it's limited to 49. My understanding is, I believe, the applicant intends to get 100 to 120 seats, you know, inside and outside, is what my understanding is. And the parking is based on the square footage of the occupied area. So, just running some rough calculations and what I think they can probably get on the parking site itself, the number of spaces, they should be able to accommodate that seating load once they go through that approval process. The Planning and Zoning Board did review this at the July 19 meeting, and they did recommend approval of Resolution 2021-40. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you might have.
Commission questions?
Yes, Ms. Vincent. There's a restaurant already on the same street, isn't it, Silver King?
That's not, really, it's not a restaurant. That's a brewery with associated, like accessory drinking, accessory bar. That's what I'm trying to get to. That was, yes, that, you know, I don't know that they have food service there.
Okay. Well, the point that I want to make is, we already have a restaurant or something like that serving food establishment. Why that has to be conditional use and not be by right? Is the code needs to be updated, you think?
It's another area, again, you know, the smart code, you know, we've done some very fast-track updates, you know, to clean up some things. But there are several areas that, you know, where the character districts and the special area plan and the transect districts do need to be reevaluated. And, you know, the Lemon Street corridor was really meant to be like an industrial arts type of district. And, because it was an industrial quarter historically. So, when the smart code was adopted, you know, over 10 years ago, that was the emphasis and the special area plan emphasis at that time. Obviously, as things evolve, you get adaptive reuse of structures. It's time to take a look again. But at that point in time, you know, restaurants were deemed a conditional use in that area. So, it's what we have to work with today, but it is something, you know, to be looked at in the future.
Yeah. Our intent has always been that we want to extend our downtown. So, Lemon Street is the appropriate place for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, a quick question. I just want to understand the parking a little bit more, Renee. I know there's three different restaurants on Safford, and I believe two of them are well over 49 seats in the restaurants. So, do you have to privately own parking, or do you utilize? I mean, a parking lot is like one property away from the city parking lot, right? And the library is another two properties away.
That's something that can be taken into consideration at the time, you know, if, when the applicant comes back and actually wants to officially increase that seating above, you know, what's allowed by right of the 40, not by, you know, as part of the conditional use, but of the 49 seats, you can take that into consideration. They'll be able to satisfy their parking load with, you know, improving that other parking lot that's under their, the other lot that's under their ownership. I feel confident in that. But yes, in general, in this downtown area, the availability of public parking is something that, you know, should be considered when, you know, when you're looking at, it doesn't officially count. But if you can make a case that, you know, collectively, there's enough, you know, enough parking to support adding, you know, additional uses, then that's something that the board can take into consideration.
Okay. So, is the 49 spaces, is that code, or is that just a condition by staff?
No, that is, that is in the smart code. So, in that particular transect zone, food service is limited to 49 seats.
Okay, in that transect zone?
Yes.
Specifically?
Yes.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Terri Pannie?
I was just gonna announce that I will be recusing myself from the vote. My company's been involved transactionally on this, but I can participate in any discussion if need be.
Okay, thank you. Any other Commissioners have questions?
Do you?
I don't have any questions, just comments.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Do you want to make, oh, later. I have some questions. The restaurant we were talking about with the mayor earlier was the Silver King Brewery? Is that what we were talking about?
Yes.
The old fire station?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I don't think they serve food.
I don't believe they do either. I think it's primarily a bar service.
If I'm not mistaken, whether you serve food or not, as long as you serve alcohol, you still need a conditional use. Or is that by right in that?
So, while I was absent, the code was updated. So, what we call conditional, what used to be conditional uses for alcohol service are now really administratively approved as long as they meet the distance and separation requirements from churches and schools and things of that nature. So, that's an administratively, administrative function now.
Are we talking about beer, or are we talking about hard liquor as well?
All, yes.
Okay. The one thing that I wanted to ask about the parking, because that kind of caught my eye. And we're not twisting the applicant's arm for contributing or volunteering that additional parking around the corner. Is that correct? Because that actually would benefit him.
No, I mean, that was, you know, the...
Did he bring that up, or did the staff bring it up?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I mean, Pat worked this through from the beginning. But they, you know, they have talked to us about the fact that they do have, the lot comes with the transaction. So, I believe they do, you know, fully intended to provide parking on that lot. That was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting.
So, as of right now, if that parking lot was not developed, then it would be limited to 49 seats or less until that parking lot was developed. And then it could go up to 49 plus, I'm not sure, I understand.
Okay, so, so, two different things. The, you have the seating limit of 49 seats. This is an adaptive reuse of an existing structure. So, as such, there's no requirement to provide any additional parking based on its current, current structure. So, that's within the smart code as an incentive to adapt, to reuse existing structures.
Within the four walls?
Correct, correct. So, if you're gonna start adding outdoor seating, which can get, you know, a pretty large area, then we're gonna have to look at it from a standpoint of, you know, providing the parking for the delta of the added space. So, you kind of have two things. You have the 49-seat limit, but you also have, you know, the overall three per thousand square feet of the structure and of the usable space. So, we would look at both of those. But, you know, in terms of adjusting the 49 above, regardless of parking, adjusting the 49 up is, it's something that'd be done by warrant as long as it meets the intent of the district and is in harmony with the, you know, with the area. So, it's not, it doesn't require variance. It is something that can be done by warrant. So, our recommendation is that it be done in association with making sure that there's available parking to, you know, to go above that, you know, that seating limit.
Available parking as in the private parking, or just?
Private. If he chose not to do that, and he can make, you know, we could look at the, you know, the surrounding area. We do have the new lots there off of Ring and stuff. If collectively, we think that there's, you know, appropriate parking to serve, you know, that additional seating, then you could do it without it, yes.
Right. I like the project. I'm just kind of trying to get my arms around. How do I, how do we work in what you just described in a conditional use? I understand the 49. I understand the warrant. And also understand it's predicated on some additional parking being provided or evaluated and found at some point. But I don't see any condition on that to limit the seating until that's done.
It would have to come back to the board to do that.
To go up above 49?
Yes, yes, it would. So, it's not contained in this current proposal. So, we, the, that would have to be approved, in my opinion, by the board with justification.
Can we memorialize that in some way in tonight's?
It's the second condition in the resolution.
That it would come back?
It doesn't, that doesn't say that specifically.
Doesn't say that it comes back to the DOC. It just says that it has to be done by approval. If you want us to add that language as part of the condition, we can absolutely do that before it's approved.
Right. I just don't want there to be any arguments over interpretation three years from now or something when none of us are up here as far as what was discussed. And somebody's gotta go back and listen to this video and hear Vaticiottis talking.
Gotcha.
So, okay. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Renee, since there are no other questions, did you want to tender your report into evidence?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, Mayor, you're gonna receive that in evidence. There being no applicant to speak tonight, we'll go right to the public. So, anyone from the public want to speak? Step up to the podium, tell us your name and address, and you have four minutes. Ms. Protos?
Ms. Protos, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I don't know about this, but I'm excited for a restaurant to come downtown and tarpon. And hopefully, they stay open in the evenings where we can have a nice dinner with vegetables, mashed potatoes, baked ham, fried chicken, not Greek food, because we've got Greek restaurants that are excellent down at the docks. And I was accused when I got up to congratulate him on what he's done with the houses. And when I went to sit down, Mr. Kulyas says, why are you kissing his butt? I says, I don't kiss anybody's butt. No one's. Shame on you. Don't talk to your mother that way.
Protos, would you state the subject, please?
But anyway, he has put a lot of money into the community. And everything he has done has been above board and number one. I don't know what he's gonna do here, but when you, on Mondays, if you want to go out to eat in Tarpon, other down at the docks, there's no place to go. So, we have to grow up a little bit, get nice things in Tarpon, get our community going like the ones south of us, and do something bright and pretty. I'm anxious to find out what kind of restaurant he's gonna put in. But anything this man has put his money into in Tarpon has elevated us and has given us much pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak? Mr. Delakis?
Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. As far as the conditional use, it does make sense what Mr. Vaticiottis mentioned to, or Commissioner Vaticiottis mentioned to memorialize something in regards to parking and such like that. But I'm a little curious about process here with this board. The item 24 that you deferred, approval of job description for future sustainability position, you deferred because you're worried about a long meeting. That's just an approval of a job description. It wasn't approving of hiring someone or funding. Yet, you're now hearing something that the applicant's not here. Why was that not deferred? I'm sure you probably would have known ahead of time before today that he wasn't gonna be here. Yet, you're hearing his conditional use application. Now, I'm not sure why he wasn't here, but is it because he believes that there will be no problem in approving this? That, being that he's running for a commission seat, does that have a factor? I don't know. But in the past, when applicants haven't been here, y'all have deferred those things. But there were people here earlier today, at least five by my count, that wanted to speak about the sustainability position. Yet, you deferred that. I'm just amazed at the way y'all think. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Kulyas?
I haven't been sworn in yet.
If you'd raise your right hand. Swear the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm actually in support of this. I've seen...
If you could state your name and address, please.
Bunny Otis Kulyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. I'm actually in support of this. I think it's good that it brings back a historical restaurant and bakery in Smirless themselves. It's in a spot where all that can be a nice, cute, walkable restaurant bar area in the evening time. And it's a bakery. So, from what I think, when I think of bakery, I think of morning lunch and sometime well into the evening, but not too late into the evening. And there's plenty of parking around that area. You got Lemon Street. You got the parking right by the Latour Building, right across from Tula's. So, there's plenty of parking area around. And I'm happy people are restoring the community. I'm very happy with that. I just, I wanted to make a point where you guys are restoring, you know, if you're gonna restore and put money into our city, and what you're doing it for a good cause, to help generate an economy and business, just pay what you need to pay to, with the city, what it's owed. That way, the city gets their money. Everybody works harder on their projects, and we develop the city and bring its charm. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak tonight? Yes, sir. If you could state your name and address, please.
Chris Rbowski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I, too, am in favor of this project. Again, this is what we're talking about, is redevelopment. Fixing old dilapidated buildings, bringing in new business to those areas. Not destroying pristine environments. This is how you fix this community. Redevelop. We need more of this and less of this talk of destroying the river, 74 acres, natural land that could be preserved. It is also interesting, I don't have a problem with an applicant not showing. Even in front of the Board of Adjustment when we're there, several members of our board have complained when people don't show up. I don't think that's necessary. However, there are some members of this board who have complained about people not showing up to defend themselves. And now, that's, that apparently isn't an issue. Just be consistent. And again, I don't, I had to run to the restroom, so I don't know. Was there anybody who asked about ex parte communications just for procedure sake? Again, I am wholeheartedly in favor of this project and the applicant. But did anybody bother to ask that question? Not that it's gonna be a problem. But we need more transparency in this city government. And each of us needs to do our part. Buddy, talk to the applicant about this thing. If you did, it'd just be nice if you brought it up. That's all. Nobody's gonna say, don't do it. Don't do this project. Everybody wants this thing. And Anita's right. Pretty much everything this man has put his money into has turned out pretty good. But it's redevelopment. That's what our city needs. But we also need transparency. So, let's just make sure we do both. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak tonight? Irene, did we receive any public comment by email?
Not to the clerk's office.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, Mayor, the public hearing is closed now. It's back to the commission for consideration unless, Renee, did you have a closing that you wanted to make? Any type of summary?
No, I would just like to get clarification on. So, we're going to amend the second condition to specify that that will be performed by the Board of Commissioners.
So, the suggestion would be approval and add the words after approval by Board of Commissioners and continue on with the sentence, and that would solve that problem?
Yes.
So, it'd read, approval by the Board of Commissioners be by warrant as part of the site plan approval process, if, subject to the commission's approval. We can handle it that way.
Okay. Back to us? We're done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The Chair will obtain a motion on that item?
Motion approved with the two conditions by staff.
Second. By that language?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we go to commission comments. The only comment that I want to make is that this bill is... The only comment that I want to make is that this build is actually in a bad shape and I am glad that we're going to have it restored again. Also, we're going to have a nice restory in the area, I think is a perfect location. That was the intent all along, is to extend our downtown so we can bring more business to Tarpin Springs. I think it's going to be a great addition to Tarpin Springs. Any other commission comments?
I just want to echo the same thing, Mayor, if I can. I'm super excited about this as well. When I was sitting on the Historic Preservation Board in college, one of the issues was that the current owner actually ripped this porch off without current approvals, and it sat dilapidated and as basically a blighted property for so many years now. So I am grateful for this individual, Mr. Andrew Otis, who is coming forward and really making a deliberate effort to restore these historic buildings around Tarpin Springs and really have them be a great asset to the city and also improving the footprint of additional restaurants in the area too is a great addition too. Thank you.
Any other commission comments?
I have one. I'm not sure, just for clarification, I don't even know if we could do this or whether it's even important, but we received an email from Mr. Andrew Otis at 10:24 this morning saying that he wasn't going to be here because he's out of town. And I'm not exactly sure when we deferred these four items. I don't think it was today. I think it was yesterday. Can anybody, I was trying to find the email from the city manager that deferred those four items. Does any, does any commissioner recall? Ms. Jacobs, was it yesterday?
Monday. It was on Monday.
Monday. Yes. So the four items were deferred yesterday. I didn't realize Mr. Andrew Otis wasn't going to be here until I saw his email today at 10:24, just for the record, everybody that's here. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny?
Zep standing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes. Next is item number 18, Resolution 2021-41, the application 2184.
Mayor, one of privilege. This is quasi judicial.
That's correct.
Do we take a five-minute break unless we can excuse ourselves during a quasi judicial?
I wouldn't suggest that. I would suggest we take the break because I'd like you to hear all of the evidence.
Would it be possible to take a five-minute?
Yeah, we can take a break.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to take a recess. We'll be back in about five minutes.
Yeah, it's already written in there.
I don't even care if it goes on there.
And then the street, the sidewalk. You know what I mean? Like the big trail there is like.
Somebody's going to trip on the roots.
I know, I agree. But they wouldn't, I mean, it's worn out. It's like a valley, right? They wouldn't do it unless it had a continuation or something, which I thought was silly.
That is silly.
But that's normal. Silly, it is.
Work one's got the red.
Caution.
It's the emergency pole.
Now, to the property owner directly, what Howard says is that we call to the property and say there is individuals of like, otherwise it's embarrassing.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, just one second. See if you can find some sort of shit.
I'll do the rest if you just.
Good ideas.
Leave it to your, you pass it out.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Okay.
He doesn't sign it?
You already signed it.
No, I signed it, but I don't, this town's not signing it, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, he.
Even if he kills himself, he has to sign it. I'm not sure about that.
It usually will stay like abstained on the vote. Yeah. Throw that gavel down.
We now reconvene the BOC meeting at 8:42 PM. The item on the agenda is 18, Resolution 2021-41, the application 2184, conditional use for gymnastics training facility River Bend Village. This is a quasi traditional. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution 2021-41, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, approving application number 21-84, requesting conditional use permit to allow the establishment of a gymnastics training facility in Lot 11, Block 12, River Bend Village, located on the east side of North Bend Drive between Anclot Road and Brady Road in the industrial plan development IPD zoning district, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. I'm going to read those quasi judicial hearing procedures one more time. This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previous established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Anyone that's going to speak on this particular agenda item, if you could stand up, raise your right hand and be sworn under oath, please. Swear the testimony about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay. Have there been any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed by any of the commissioners?
I did, no. Mr. Travsky, I spoke to Mr. Stamis and Mr. Zoots recently, but not about this project.
Like, it's not an ex parte communication, then we don't have to worry about that. If it wasn't about this project, though, thank you.
I spoke to Mr. Zoots just in passing about this when we were talking about the project in general. He told me that this applicant would be coming forward, but that was it.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and make a presentation. Ms. Vincent, would you like to proceed?
Thank you. This is application 21-84, conditional use application for a parcel in the River Bend Industrial Park, just to get your bearings. This is the residential, this was, entire site was approved as a plan, annexed in as a planned development. It was originally approved in Pinellas County. This is the residential portion, and then this is a large retention pond, and then this is the industrial park portion. This lot in question is the first lot off of the interior road here. Again, this is a, we're processing this as a conditional use, the project, the property is owned industrial plan development. There's nothing in the IPD district quite synonymous with a gymnastics training facility. Health clubs are identified as a permitted use. Tennis and racket clubs were identified as conditional uses. So in abundance of caution, we did recommend that this be processed as a conditional use just so that there's, in the public interest and the interest of the applicant. This is the, just the preliminary concept plan for, for the facility, you know, pretty much a large industrial looking building, at least from the outside, and parking on site. Again, the site will, the site plan itself, this is one of those that will not come back to the board as a site plan because this was a planned development and there's a final planned development, so those are being handled through the Technical Review Committee. Several months ago, or a couple of months ago at least, I sent an email to the board explaining that process. So these individual lots do not come back to the board under our code standards. Our conditional use criteria, we do find that this would been, is appropriate to the property in question and compatible with the area. The business park is really a mix of use, intend to be a mix of uses, you know, obviously slanted toward industrial, but these types of uses are hard to locate in most areas because of the size of the buildings that need to accommodate them, and they will be generating, you know, positive revenue for the community and employment. We do find that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, no impact on historical or environmental resources. This is a developed site, not expected to affect adjoining property values or exceed the, the facilities are already provided to this site as part of the planned development and the improvements that have already been made. So staff recommendation is to approve Resolution 2021-41, granting a conditional use approval for the operation of a gymnastics training facility in the IPD zoning district. Planning and zoning board did review this on July the 19th, and they did recommend approval, and there was no public comment, and at this time I would enter into the formal record, my staff report and the presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Questions from the commission, please? Anyone?
Ms. Vincent?
Vice, I'm sorry, Mayor?
Ms. Vincent, did you say fitness, fitness is allowed to be with, by right?
It says a health club would be permitted by right. We don't really define what that is.
But gymnastics facility is not. Do you think it's an opportunity for us to fine tune our codes?
There's so much that needs to be fine tuned in our codes, sir. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, in this instance, we had a health club that was permitted, but you had tennis and racket clubs, which are a little larger footprint, larger areas because of the type of use, was a conditional use. So, you know, I err on the side of caution and recommended that they come forward, you know. I wasn't comfortable interpreting it to be permitted by right based on what I had in the code, so we brought it forward to the board.
Thank you. That's all.
Vice Mayor?
Renee, I've got a couple of questions. Is, do you know if the retention pond's fenced in or not?
It is not.
It is not, okay. And then, is there any requirements to have a fencing in the front of the property? Obviously, the question to me, the question of reason is, is that you're in an industrial area, there could be potentially large semis that come in and out, and you've got young children coming in and out of the doors. Having a young child myself, I understand that she will dart at any time if she wants to. It's not a pleasant feeling, right, by a street, but most likely, I mean, this is something that I would have concerns with moms or dads bringing their young kids or kids, adults, I mean, it could be all different ages, I'm sure, but being in an industrial area. Is there any discussion about that, or has there any discussion with the applicant about putting some type of fence along the sidewalk area to prevent a kid running out into the street or at least in the back part of the property as well, too, to prevent a kid going into the retention pond?
I believe there is an intent to fence. I know on the entire site plan, you know, fencing along the industrial side of the retention pond is shown, so I believe as each lot builds out, the fencing, I'll defer to Mr. Stamis, but the fencing will be provided as each lot builds out. Regarding, you know, fencing in the front, it's not something that we would require. We haven't had any conversations specific to that for safety of the children. I would, I would think that, you know, this is a very experienced operator, you know, they're relocating, I believe, from another industrial area into, you know, want to bring it here. They know their, their needs, so if that's, if that's something that they need, I'm sure they'll ask for it, but I would really defer to them on that, that point.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, from my, from my stance, I think it makes sense from a safety standpoint as a condition. So I also want to understand, too, since it was a giant plan that was, went through the county, the only thing that would come back to the board would be conditional use is only, everything else is staff driven. Did I understand that correctly?
Right. So you, if you've gone through the area, you may have noticed that there is one building under construction now that that site plan was reviewed and approved collectively by the Technical Review Committee and for compliance with all the conditions of the, you know, of the planned development.
Okay. For the edification of the public, can you just give a quick update of what the TRC is?
I'm sorry. The Technical Review Committee is a city technical committee that's comprised of members from just about every department except like finance and procurement, but anybody that's involved with development, planning, public works, stormwater, building, utilities, everybody sits on that committee to review projects and make sure that they are, fire, police, everybody's on that committee.
Great. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Tierpenny, yes?
I don't have a question, but since Renee's up there, I just, you know, so often up here, we're accused of not being transparent and not being, you know, open and transparent, so I just want to thank you for erring on the side of caution, although I think you probably could have, you know, interpreted in such a way to where you did need to come for the conditional use, and I want to thank the applicant for being willing to go by the rules that we have in place and taking the extra step to get the conditional use approval. So thank you all for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan, you have questions?
Yeah, I do, and Renee, let me know if this is more appropriate for the applicant. But the main entrance, is that going to be on the side where the parking is with, near the handicap spots, or is that going to be on the front?
I think I'm going to defer to the applicant on that one.
Okay.
See if I have the site.
Okay, we're not going to talk to the applicant just yet. We're going to finish our questions with Renee first, so.
Okay. And then, how large is the area between the actual front of the building and the street? Because it looks like there's a, some sort of drainage easement out front and a landscape area. So I was just curious about that. And again, if that's something the applicant.
I think the applicant can probably answer that, so.
Okay. Those are my only two questions.
What I can tell you is, it's within the parameters that was approved as, for the setbacks for the planned development, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vaticiotis, did you have questions? No?
No, it's a simple enough plan, and it wouldn't be in front of us unless it was interpreted to be a continued, conditional use, so thank you.
All right, thanks, Renee. The applicant like to step forward and make any type of presentation? I know that you've both been sworn in. If you could step forward and tell us your name and your address and tell us whatever you want.
Okay. My name is Jessica Dumberley, and my, you want my home address or?
Business address is fine.
2140 Range Road, Clearwater, Florida, 33765. Apollo School of Gymnastics has been, is the oldest gymnastics facility in Pinellas County. We were established in 1975, and most of our clientele currently lives in northern Pinellas County. Over the course of... Over the course of Apollo School of Gymnastics, we always have leased our facility. We're, we're in our second facility right now. And the opportunity to purchase has now presented itself, and I believe Tarpon Springs is a perfect location. And the, we've been looking now for over a year in multiple areas of Pinellas County, and it's really hard to find an established building that meets the criteria that we need. Not only do we need ceiling height, but on top of that, we have to have at least fifty feet, square feet of open space. And most of the buildings that are big enough have a lot of support, support beams within the facility. So the idea to move to Tarpon Springs where we can accommodate more of our clientele is a plus. And then on top of that, being able to have the opportunity to build a, a structure that's specific to our needs is very exciting. In case of child safety, I think that's a great, a great thing for us to take into consideration. We are currently in an industrial complex in Clearwater, and we do have the, the layout of the gym is where the, the children where they actually participate in gymnastics is away from any of the exits where they could get out of the facility. The main entrance is where our observation room is, and that's where the parents would be with the kids at all times. The idea of a fence outside, I love that idea, and that would be something that we could consider. But the safety of the children, it's always one of our main, main concerns.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions of Jessica?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate your discussion on the safety, but in your opinion, and maybe Mr. Stam, is Mr. Stamis an applicant as well?
Yes, sir. But we have one witness right now, so we need to.
One witness, so, in your opinion, from your experience, do you think you need a safety fence in front, given the design that you have?
No, I don't think, I don't think it's necessary, but I, I would be open to the idea, but I don't think it's necessary.
Any other commission questions? Yes, sir, Vice Mayor?
What is the age groups for the people that are in your classes?
So we start as early as walking, and we go all the way through, up until this last year, it was up through eighteen years old. But in this last year, we actually did start an adult gymnastics class as well. Our, majority of our students are around the age of eight and nine, but we offer it from walking to adult.
Understood, that's cool. I have a question for Mr. Stamis.
Okay, we need to finish with this witness first.
Okay, one witness, and then we get another one, okay.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any other questions on that.
Any other commission questions?
I, I do have one.
Yes, Commissioner.
It's not clear to me, you're purchasing the building and the spot as well, or are you going to be leasing from pioneer developers?
We, we're purchasing the, the building and the land.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no other questions, Mr. Stamis, did you have something that you wanted to talk to the board about? Okay, I think that she's done that.
George Stamis, forty-six West Lemon Street, Tarpon Springs, Florida, and I'm representing the developer pioneer, who are also the contractors, who are building the buildings at Riverbend Business Park. And if, I don't know if you've really, you know, it's been a while since this was approved, so I don't know if you've had an overview recently of the park and what we're doing out there. But the business park consists of twenty-four, we'll call them business park lots, I don't want to call it industrial, because we really don't have many of our users. And the people that we've actually contracted with to build buildings are light, very light manufacturers, some warehousing, one RV storage facility that's going to have air-conditioned RV storage units, gymnastics facility, people, these group that makes crystals for lasers. And it's just like two or three people in a building that are doing the very high tech, some very high-tech manufacturing in there, but very, it's not like we're going to be seeing semis coming in and out of this place all day long from the people that we've sold to so far. It's, it's more kind of light industrial and storage and some recreation with the RVs. So every building out there is going to have a, more like a storefront facade on it than just a metal building facade. So you'd picture it being more like a stuccoed with storefront glass and banding and landscaping in the front. And then you go around into the parking areas, and it turns into more of a typical, you know, building with cement block walls up to about eight feet. And then metal buildings up to maybe twenty, twenty-four foot eve heights. So, so it's going to be a little bit more upscale than your typical park that you drive through, business park. Most of them are going to have storefront glass in the front rather than, you know, an industrial front, metal building front facade. And in the case of Apollo, I know you were asking about the design and where the entrance was. The design here, all of our architects is doing all of our designs and all of our buildings are very high-end, well-known, respected architects in the area here. So they've done the site plan layout for Apollo so far, and it's the one that was shown up there on the projector. It's got a parking lot that's on the side of the building, and the entry's on the side of the building, so this parking lot and the entrance are connected. There's no need to get anywhere near the street that you drive in on. And you asked if they were in front of the, the handicap spaces. Yes, it's right in front of that group of parking spots there and entering the building. Of course, if there's a need for safety fencing or whatever, I know the owner would be more than happy to consider doing that. But the design is purposeful to not have to have people walk around the front of the building to come in. It's side entry right off the parking lot. And is there any other dimensional, I forget, there was a question or two about the configuration of the building.
So I'm going to go to the Vice Mayor first. Vice Mayor, you had questions?
Sure, yeah. So I see like landscaped area, thank you for that explanation, Mr. Stamis, that was good, for a nice update to what's going on out there. You mentioned a landscape area, so I'm assuming it's just like hedge, like a hedge of some sort that's going to be planted. Am I correct in that?
Every, every lot is going to have at least sixteen trees on it.
Okay.
There's going to be hedging and buffering. And then, most of them on the front of the building being that we're trying to create that facade that looks more like a retail center, will have landscaping in the front as well.
Okay, yeah, this is much different than a traditional industrial.
It is, we're trying to make it upscale and something that looks more retail than, than commercial, I mean, more than, than industrial.
So there's a privacy fence that says in the back it's six feet. What, is that like a wood vinyl, or?
It's a vinyl fence that will go all the way around the perimeter of the pond.
Great. Alright, appreciate it. Are you teaching any classes at the?
Yeah, I'm going to do the high diving classes over there.
Okay, don't sit down just yet, we have other questions. So Commissioner Terepanny, did you have your hand up? No? Commissioner Donovan, did you have questions?
No, I got all the information I need from the.
Alright, thank you. I saw that Commissioner Vaticiottis did have a question now.
I did, but I don't know, so.
You don't now, okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, anyone from the public like to step forward and discuss this application with the commission? Any in the public? That's alright. Okay, so I don't see anybody, so it's back to the commission for consideration, Mayor.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion on item number eighteen.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay. Are there any commission comments, questions?
Just a comment, I mean, this is a great business, I think, for Tarpon Springs, and something we should all be proud of. I know there's a lot of families that are going to be super excited about this, that it's going to be in Tarpon. It's definitely a unique, outside of like the traditional semi-loads of things coming in and out of the industrial area. So I think it's a great asset. I appreciate you coming to Tarpon Springs. I think this industrial area is really, it looks like it's developing nicely for an asset for Tarpon Springs for many years to come, so thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Stamis for bringing this development to our area, because having light industry, it's something that we really need in Tarpon Springs. Bring your jobs to Tarpon, so appreciate that very much. Any other comments?
I've just got one early comment I want to make, that, so we did receive a, a letter in the backup, and a couple of things that it says, and the applicant may have touched on it, but I just want to touch on it a little bit further. Apollo employs twenty-five people in our community, generates a significant amount of money annually, spends a significant amount of money annually, serves over six hundred families each year, and serves over seven hundred children each school year through gymnastic classes, camps, and special events. So this isn't just like a, a small business here, this is a bona fide business that they've done a really good job. So I think we should all be super excited for them and, and the city as well, so.
Any other comments?
I'm looking forward to the ribbon cutting, so, thank you, that's it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terepanny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Lahuzos?
Yes. Item nineteen is the resolution twenty-two-one dash thirty-seven, approval of new position and job description for planning department. That item was deferred from July thirteen, two thousand and twenty-one regularization. City Attorney, please read the resolution.
Mayor Commissioners, resolution twenty-two-one dash thirty-seven, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, providing for a new position in the planning department, approving a new job description and providing for an effective date hereof. There was a reading of resolution twenty-two-one dash thirty-seven by title only.
Thank you. Staff report?
Good evening, Paul Smith, acting city manager. I just wanted to introduce a few thoughts here. Renee's worked hard on this position recommendation to the city manager, and I just wanted to speak a few thoughts, trying to represent his thinking on this, why this particular position is on the agenda for you tonight. As outlined in the resolution and the whereas statements, there's a lot of initiatives that the commission has supported and also required in our charter to do some work on the comprehensive plan and strategic planning. And the planning department has identified a need for this position, an urgent need, so this work can get started and get done. So the city manager is asking for your approval of this position so that he could get started on filling it to get this important work started. So I'll turn it over to Renee.
Thank you, Paul. Renee Vincent, planning and zoning director. So I believe the board started to discuss this a little bit. This is one of the three priority positions that was initially being discussed at the budget session, which was carried over to this, to Thursday. But as, as Paul said, you know, working with the city manager, we would like to get, I'll say preapproval, if you will, to go ahead and advertise, you know, this position to begin recruiting. As you know, it does take, you know, a while to bring somebody on board. The comprehensive, we do expect to award the RFP for the comprehensive plan next month. The strategic plan is underway. The distant corridor project is underway. We have the land development code updates. As the mayor astutely pointed out, we probably are overdue for updates to the SMART code and special area plan that's associated. So this position really is meant to help fill all of those gaps with a primary, with also an emphasis on the sustainability support to the committee and supporting the public services in that role. You know, the planning department really is responsible for a lot of the policy documents that, that, you know, to, to, establishing those policy documents to implement those initiatives. And so integrating the sustainability action plan, when that's completed into the comp plan, as well as the land development code, is, is all part of what this, this person will be taking on, along with, you know, some of the technical aspects of the comprehensive plan updates. More technical things, the, the capital, the, you know, utilities and environmental and transportation are areas where we hope that this person will be able to, you know, help us fill some, some gaps there. In addition, I mean, I do have a list of about twenty different, you know, projects that really are, have been backlogged over the years that are important, that I can chip away at, and I can continue to ask for consultant dollars to do. But even with consultant dollars, there's only so much that you can manage even with consultants. And so, so for those reasons, we are asking for the additional position. It's an additional principal planner position. And hopefully, if you approve that, then this evening we will get started with filling this position. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
We going to go to public comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Anyone who wants to comment on that?
Bonita is cool, yes, five-nine-five Peninsula Avenue, and Amy Samarcus will be donating two minutes over time. This is, this position is called a principal planner position, correct? This new position? Well, don't we already have a principal, principal planner? From an email that I received through the board on July fifteenth at five oh-three PM, I see Ms. McNeese's signature. Patricia L. McNeese, AICP, principal planner, City of Tarpon Springs. So maybe Ms. Vincent can explain to us what principal planner, uh, principal planner A is going to be doing, and principal planner B is going to be doing. And it's concerning that we pushed off this sustainability issue, which, I don't know why we did, I don't know why we ran, ran away from this conversation. And the duties for this principal planner that's being brought up, and this is, this is all semantics of words. And until we have a board who can tell the city manager to make sure that the sustainability coordinator is actually helping the department heads implement certain things, this principal planner is just a semantic. It's not what the people at Tarpon Springs want. They're looking for a sustainability coordinator to help manage, develop, update, maintain, implement the city's sustainability action plan and serve as the primary staff support to the city's sustainability committee. So this principal planner is going to be support to the sustainability committee? And who's going to be the support to the sustainability coordinator? Isn't that the sustainability committee when they give their recommendations and moving forward? Promote initiatives and sustainability programs to incorporate sustainable practices into city policy. So assist departments in defining sustainability program goals and objectives and means of accomplishing program objectives. Reviews and prepares recommended studies, actions, policies, projects, or programs to reduce the impacts of a changing climate, including sea level rise, extreme rainfall, extreme heat events, droughts, flooding, and storms which threaten current community priorities, human well-being, property, infrastructure, and natural resources. And, you know, over the last year, the planning department has taken on new responsibilities, strategic planning coordination, citywide online community engagement, distant corridor project, and is also focusing on long overdue updates to many regulating plans and documents. Which is obviously stuff that we talk about all the time. And when is this sustainability coordinator going to come out? I know Mr. Paul Smith, he carries a lot of hats, he does a lot here. I know, you know, there may be a need inside of his department, and the guy does a lot of, you know. But the coordinator, the sustainability coordinator needs to be talked about. We're just mixing responsibilities underneath one another. And then we don't want to have a situation down the road where we're saying, our sustainability coordinator is supposed to do that. But no, 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 here are some of the aspects that the principal planner B is supposed to be doing. So do we need two principal planners? Is McNeese, is Ms. McNeese our principal planner? And when are we finally going to address the sustainability issue and give them the work that's needed? As opposed to giving certain positions and creating them and adding sustainability characteristics to it. Thank you.
Good evening. Jackie Turner, seven ninety-two Chesapeake Drive. I certainly understand and appreciate the need for this position. I sit on the Board of Adjustments, so I see the works of Ms. Vincent and her staff, Ms. McNeese. It's very detailed, very time-consuming, and as the city continues to grow and we see projects like the gymnastics studio that was just before us comes up, we're going to need some more support. I, however, I feel it's not fair for the person who will be hired in this very important position to also be. to also be saddled with sustainability duties, as has been discussed. As Ms. Vincent said, you know, she already has a backlog of twenty-plus projects. We know this is gonna continue to grow. We know our sustainability needs continue to grow. So please, as you, you know, process through the budgeting process and having those discussions about a sustainability coordinator, as so many others have said tonight, please take a serious look at what the Sustainability Committee has done of making that a dedicated, separate position. Otherwise, I fear that you're gonna set this principal planner position up for failure. They're gonna be a jack-of-all-trades, master-of-none. Let them do what they do best, and let's get a sustainability coordinator that does what they do best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here to lax five one four Ashland Avenue. As Ms. Turner and Mr. Kulyas mentioned, the planning department does have a big load. Just got a huge project dropped on them. You've got other projects around the city that need their focus. But as I'm looking at the memorandum, the first five or six things here, develop, update, maintain, and implement the city's sustainability action plan and serve as primary staff support to the city's sustainability committee. Organizes, prepares, participates, and performs follow-up work for meetings as a staff liaison for sustainability matters. Promotes initiatives and sustainability programs. Assist departments in defining sustainability programs. Reviews and prepares recommended studies, actions, policies, projects, or programs to reduce the impact of a climate change, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Promotes the use of methods, systems, and materials that are harmonious with land, water, energy, natural resources, and natural cycles. Seeks to apply the economic benefits of sustainability measures into operational efficiency. Develops, coordinates, and conducts educational programs, including workshops and public events related to sustainability initiatives. And then on the back, it goes to the actual planning department functions. Now, we've had meetings and discussed over many months, maybe over a year or so, and I've said it before. You've got one of the most dedicated employees over there, Mr. Paul Smith, who's been saddled with numerous projects, jobs, and functions, and he gladly, as a good soldier of the city, takes them on. And now we're going to hire someone in the planning department to do those same functions that should be a sustainability coordinator. All of those are part of what should be the job description for the sustainability coordinator that you deferred. What are y'all doing? Treat your staff better. There's no reason that if you hire a planner, and whether it's a principal planner or maybe assistant planner, there's enough work in the planning department to be done without saddling them with all this with regards to the sustainability. That needs to be a dedicated person responsible for all of these things that Ms. Vincent has enumerated. Get it together, guys.
Do we have any other public comments on this item? I hear none. Chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
And we go to commission comments and questions. Vice Mayor Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Hey Renee, one of the, that was initially brought up was that we have the comprehensive plan, the strategic plan. That was one of the aspects, right? And then the sustainability for, and I said, well, why don't we just hire a consultant to handle this? And obviously, there's some other reasons behind that. So can you just share a couple of those? And then I've got another question as well to just elaborate a little bit more.
Sure. Before I jump in, I do wanna make some clarifying comments. The job description that is in your agenda backup, and it was in the prior, it was, it was the same job description that was at the budget workshop last week. It does not include those, some of those functions that were being talked about by the public. So I do wanna, specific to, I do wanna read what is in there. And it's, there's a sec, there's a bullet one point one one. It says, perform, performs work related as assigned or required, including but not limited to the following additional responsibilities. And so these are the things that are specific to sustainability that this position can assist with if we need to. But this was written as kind of like an and/or type of, you know, others' duties as assigned. So this has evolved over ti, you know, since it began with the original July thirteenth, you know, staffing, and then there was the meeting with Sustainability Committee. It's been to the Budget Committee. So I do wanna apologize because I did fail to update the agenda backup with the job, same job description that went to the budget workshop last week. So, so with that, there is a section, as I said, it says, performs related work as assigned or required, including but not limited to the following additional responsibilities. Organizes, prepares, participates, and performs follow-up work for meetings as a planning staff liaison for sustainability matters. Promotes initiatives and sustainability programs to incorporate sustainable practices into city planning policy. Reviews studies, reviews, studies, policies, projects, programs, and best practices for inclusion in the comprehensive plan and strategic plans. I won't read the rest of that. Promote the economic benefits of sustainability and measures as it relates to operational efficiency, the tourism economy, and overall community economic health, and the creation of green jobs into the comprehensive plan and strategic plans for the city. And assist in developing, coordinating, and conducting educational programs, including workshops, public events, and public events related to sustainability initiatives. So it, you know, the sustainability piece of this particular job description is very much in the planning side of the house and making sure that, as I stated earlier, that we are properly updating the comp plan, our codes, and, and setting the policy in those documents along with the strategic plan to carry out the initiatives of the Sustainability Committee. So I just did wanna get that into the record. Regarding, I'm sorry, Commissioner Carr, your question. We do have, you know, we are using a consultant to do this first big update of the comprehensive plan, you know. But with the budget that we have, it's still going to require, you know, a significant amount of staff support to, you know, to get through that process. And then we are required by our charter every three years to review and update that comprehensive plan. We have taken on the responsibility, at least at this point in time, for the strategic plan. And we think, and because we do want the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan, you know, melded and, and, you know, rowing in the same direction, if you wanna use that term. So, you know, like I said, I can, I can hire consultants if the board wants to fund them, you know, every year to try to chip away at these projects. But again, you have a limited staff capacity to be able to actually manage the consultants and make sure, because the, the biggest part of that is the public, you know, the public engagement that needs to happen with all of these projects. And so the consultants generally, you know, strategic plan obviously is a different animal, but with the comprehensive plan, the SMART code, and if you were here when all of that was, you know, when we did the last update, you know, those are two-year processes, you know. And so it does, it just takes a tremendous amount of staff time. With regard to the question about what the, you know, I have a principal planner. Yes, I do. And Ms. McNeese is an extremely capable principal planner. She has a full load just managing all the applications that come in and go through Technical Review Committee and come before the Planning and Zoning Board and this board and Historic Preservation. So, I mean, it is, you know, our caseloads are not slowing down, you know, it's, so we're just, we're tapped. So that answered your question. That was a long-winded answer. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, that answered it. So I appreciate that. It's clear that you all have a lot in your department, and it's obviously, it's, your department is imperative to get things in and out to also, for the city to have a good reputation, I think, as well. So if we're sitting on something because you're backlogged, it also gives the city a bad rep from a development standpoint. So I appreciate you saying, hey, let me, let's evaluate this. When you came in, you weren't like right away, gangbusters, I need like a bunch of more staff, right? I mean, you've been here for, is it a year now?
A little over a year, yes.
A little over a year, yeah. So can you touch base a little bit about the LAP or LAP certification?
LAP certification.
And my understanding is that we need that to receive certain grants. Now, would this person need to have that certification? Or would it be some type of expertise in it, or how would that work?
It would, it would be, we would be looking for the, the transportation planning expertise in this position that would help, you know, with our LAP certification. The LAP certification's being carried out by the Project Administration Department, but it's a citywide certification. So there are people from each department that, that contribute to the overall knowledge base that you need to obtain the LAP certification. And yes, what, what that allows you to do is to directly receive federal dollars, like FDOT dollars. In the case of, you know, if we did go to construction with Distin, it would allow us to apply for trans, for, for construction funding for that project in the future, as long as we have our own LAP certification. Otherwise, we would have to contract with somebody to do that for us. So I think, I think that's the, the short answer, yes.
And typically, those LAP grants are a lot more than fifty thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, those are in the millions.
All right. Thanks for confirming that. And I, I do think it makes sense for what you talked about from a sustainability standpoint. There's been a lot of discussions tonight, probing specifically at a director. But the fact that the city is actually making an intentional effort to put this in a department specifically, I think it shows that the city's making the right steps and, and hearing what the community's saying. So I think it's a lot to be proud of. So, thank you.
I would just, I would just say that I support the hire, just because of the, the title. I mean, that doesn't, you have multiple principal planners already in your office existing. I mean, it's pretty clear how our city is growing and how busy your department is. And then coupled with the amount of code updates and amendments that need to be made, I don't have any issue with it and I fully support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan, any questions?
No questions. I think you answered about six of them initially. But yeah, I like positions that pay for themselves. And I think with the dollars saved on consultants, I think the dollars generated through grants, I think this position makes a lot of sense. I fully support the new position. I feel like it'd be a half-measure to say, hey, we need to do all these code updates, all these planning updates, the strategic plan, and then not give our planning department the tools that they need to actually accomplish it. But I will say, just as a note to the general public, this is in no way an indictment on any of the other positions that we're gonna be discussing Thursday at our work session. This is simply this specific position tonight.
Commissioner Tikkert, any comments?
Yes, I do. But before I, I speak, I, I have a question of Vice Mayor Carr. I didn't quite catch what you said initially. Before you said you supported this position. You mentioned something about the sustainability position, or did I misunderstand you? I, I'm just asking. I don't, I didn't hear you.
I think you misunderstood. I, I did mention sustainability. I think it's important that the city is evaluating all aspects, not just a single division or a single category in the city, that their sustainability is only in a bubble. I think it's important that it's being dispersed amongst multiple divisions and addressed. So that's what I was talking about.
No, no, you've clarified it. Thank you. There's a couple of things. First of all, I, I'm the one who started the strategic planning initiative that kind of got this thing started. And just with regard to Vice Mayor Carr's question about the consultant, I want to kind of recalibrate everyone's thoughts. The specific question I asked there was, and I even asked you, who in the city can, knows how to do a strategic plan? City manager didn't. You've not done one. I lived with one back in, when I was city manager. We went through the Union Academy Neighborhood, but I'm not part of the staff, and I'm certainly not the city manager. So we needed to get somebody on board who knew how to do the process. That was the purpose of bringing USF on board, the Institute of Government. Then there were some issues that the collaborative labs felt that they could help facilitate the communication among us and things, and that they, they adjusted their proposal and, and they've joined as partners with USF. So the main reason why we've got a consultant is that we really do not have anybody here at the city that knows how to create a strategic plan. Also, I've been one of the biggest critics of our comp plan. You've heard me say this numerous times since, as far back as two thousand and five, two thousand in timeframe, we seem to kind of update what's needed based on the project in hand or something that the state puts in our hands as far as a requirement. And I was on the Charter Revision Commission that was one of the architects of making the update of the strategic, the comprehensive plan every three years. And then, of course, ordinances every five years, as the city clerk knows. So there is work for, we've made work just this past year above what the standard planning department has been over the last ten years. So what happens after the strategic plan is completed? Well, the big issue is implementing the strategic plan, and that's gonna be a big part. And so from that standpoint, you need somebody here, I think, that will actually follow its creation, understand its creation, what its intent is, and then also be here at the time that USF goes through the implementation phase, phase three, and then continues on with that process. And perhaps we do updates on that periodically. So I, I do think there's a principal planner as described in the way that Ms. Vincent did. Now, I wanna turn to sustainability a little bit, and it's as related to the principal planner position. The one thing I wanna express caution on everybody is not to promise more than can be delivered. We rolled sustainability into the principal planner position and also into Mr. Smith's Assistant Public Services Director position as a way to address sustainability, the sustainability action plan, its, and its implementation. Mr. Smith has been asking for that assistant super, assistant public services director position for three years. We've thrown the strategic plan, the comp plan, everything else at you, and then all of a sudden, we've, we've tried to use those two positions as a solution for the sustainability effort that we've got going on in the city. So I know Mr. Smith is quite capable. I also, he's very smart, and I would be disappointed if he didn't shift his priorities based on what the needs were at the time to try and appease everybody of just simply focusing on sustainability with his position and letting the other stuff that was the real need for that position go, and the same thing for you. And so from my perspective, I'm gonna support this position, but by no means am I supporting it from the standpoint that it's, it's, it's certainly gonna assist from a sustainability perspective, but I just don't see either position taking a key role in sustainability. And I'm hoping we're gonna have this conversation Thursday night at the, at the budget workshop. So I'm gonna support this. As far as I'm on the commission, I'm certainly not going to be upset if I, if I see that you're mired down with the typical planning stuff and sustainability is not getting done. And it's the same thing with Mr. Smith. If he gets his Assistant Public Services Director position this year, I'm not gonna hold him to doing that. And, and that's why I think we need to have, without giving my preference of the direction we should go on a, on a, on a sustainability director. That's why I think we have to have a sober discussion on sustainability and how we're gonna implement that whole aspect, that whole discipline of sustainability in the city. And, and I just don't see this, just parsing it out between two positions. And the other thing, too, I want to make sure that everyone understands, the commission especially, those few responsibilities that you have in there do not encompass all of sustainability, just like the positions that, the descriptions that Mr. Smith has in his does not encompass all of sustainability. There are certain aspects, such as public health and other avenues, that don't fit in either one. So there still has to be someone that's gonna accommodate that aspect. And so we haven't painted a complete picture of the sustainability discipline between the two positions. That's all I've got to say, Mayor. I just, I support this position, and I'm looking forward to Thursday night's discussion concerning, I guess we won't be talking about this. If this is approved, we'll be talking about the Construction Field Inspector, the Assistant Public Services Director, and also the sustainability position, which I'm hoping is, we'll talk about that in terms of both the coordinator and the director level. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Well, we discussed this in the previous meetings, and we, as a BOC, we gave additional responsibilities to the planning and zoning director, Ms. Vincent, to do, to upgrade the comprehensive plan, which is, hasn't been done in many years, to create, to work with the consultant to create the strategic plan, to update the smart code. We had two scenarios today that shows that we need to up, upgrade the, the smart code, to develop and update, maintain, and implement the city's sustainability action plan and work if we have a sustainability coordinator, which I think we need. All those things, I am in favor for it. My question is, why this item is an agenda tonight, proposing to fill this position before we discuss the other positions and look at, and get the recommendation from the Budget Advisory Committee? Why we do this today and we, we going to discuss all the others Thursday night? Why don't we do that, all, discuss all these on Thursday and make a decision why we need to do this today?
Are you asking me?
Yes. I wasn't asking you, Mr. Le, uh, Vaticaris. I was asking her.
No, I...
And I think Mr. Smith, you know, kind of echoed this, you know, the city manager's thoughts as well as mine. The sustainability, I mean, excuse me, the, the strategic plan is already underway. Distin is already underway. The comprehensive plan is going to be started, you know, August, September timeframe. So my, it, the workload is, is piling up. And so the, that's why we're asking to be able to get it approved so that we can start a recruitment process. We wouldn't expect to get somebody on board until, you know, early fall, probably. So, you know, that was the rationale behind going ahead and bringing it forward. If you want, you know, if it's the board's choice, if you prefer to defer it to Thursday, I mean, that's a, that's a work session, so I don't think they can adopt, you can adopt a resolution at the work session. So that, that's the rationale. It, we know it's going to take time to recruit somebody, and the work is already going on. So we're already behind the curve.
Thank you. Mr. Herring, would you please come to the podium and ask a question, please?
Ron Herring, Finance Director.
Thank you, sir. We are about to, they're proposing to fill this position today without getting a recommendation from the Budget Advisory Committee. You, as a director of the finance, do you think we should be okay with that, doing it now before we give you any recommendation from the Budget Advisory Committee?
Well, it sounds like from what Ray, Renee was saying, that there seems like there's an urgency to get the position, you know, going right now with all the duties that she's undertaking right now. So, you know, I guess that would be up to the board here, be able to fill that position.
And financially, you okay with that?
Yes, like, like Renee said, probably wouldn't be filled until October and, and the new fiscal year.
Thank you. Any other commission comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzas?
Yes. Okay, we're now going to the item number 20, which is the ordinance 2021-13, decreasing water sewer, water sewer and reclaiming rates for the fiscal year 2022. This is second reading. City Attorney, if you please, read the ordinance.
Mayor Commissioners' Ordinance 2021-13, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending portions of Chapter 20 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, decreasing the water rates for fiscal year 2022. That's October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022. Decreasing the sewer rates for the fiscal year 2022. That's from October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022. Decreasing the reclaimed water rates for fiscal year 2022. That's October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022. And providing for an effective day disorderness. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2021-13 by title only. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on July 14, 2021.
Staff report. Mr. Smith?
Ron Herring, Finance Director. It started back in last January, February. We started working on the revenue sufficiency study. It was presented to the board on May 25th. On July 13th, ordinance 2021-13 was approved at the, at the first reading. Tonight is the second reading to approve ordinance 2021-13, which reduces the rates by 2.2% for fiscal year 2022, and no increases for 2023 and fiscal year 2024. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. We'll go to public comments. Any public comments on this item?
Thank you.
Peterlax, 514 Ashland Avenue. I'll be short on this. Thank you for finding a way to reduce our water and sewer rates, but I do want to reiterate, one of the other options you have is reducing the municipal utilities tax on our water rates and our sewer rates. So if you really want to help the residents, get rid of that, because I think, I'm not sure what the exact percentage is, but it's close to 10% of what your water and sewer bill is. So it's nice you're reducing by 2.75% your water and sewer rates, but we're paying another 8 to 10% in the utility tax on top of that. So that would, should have been part of the discussion in regards to reducing these rates. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Panayotis Kuyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. It's been a long road, but I do want to congratulate Mr. Herring for doing a job well done, doing the research and the time needed to look into these rates. I just wanted to give the citizens of Tarpon Springs a timeline of, and the credit could, should go to the citizens of Tarpon Springs. Unfortunately, it doesn't go to the board. We heard a lot of the complaints from the citizens about water and waste rates and premiums, and we started, may, we started addressing this issue from last April, which was April 14, 2020. We also addressed this issue December 3, 2020, you know, during the auditor meeting. We also addressed the issue back in January 26, 2021. And as Mr. Herring, I mean, that's pretty much a whole year, folks. It's a whole year. So, you know, you can come and make a difference without being a commissioner on the board. You can help push to get the right things done if you, if your heart's there. And you got to be persistent around here. It's not, you can just throw it out here during the end of public comments and just let it be. You got to stay on top of things. You got to make sure you follow through. And if you're looking out for the best interest of Tarpon Springs, it's going to work out. You know, back in March 1st is when I, 2021, is when I received the email from Mr. Herring confirming that the water race rate state, the water and waste rate study was happening. Back on March 9, 2021, I made a statement where, you know, I would put my life on it that we're going to have a reduction. Yeah, it's not that big of a reduction. I mean, you know, we're supposed to have an increase from 2.75, and now we're at a minus 2.2, so I would think it's about a 5% difference. So that's great. Everybody should be really happy right now. If anything, that's one of the biggest accomplishments this last year, because everybody's getting helped out. Doesn't matter if, you know, you're a middle-class family, if you're above class, or, you know, you live in the poverty level, this is helping you out. Doesn't matter if you're a business that's just starting up, or, you know, you, you've had your restaurant for many, many years. I mean, this helps everybody, helps our economy, helps our realtors. And this is a great start, and I want this to be an example that the people of Tarpon Springs, they can reach out to certain people. You can't be silent politicians. You have to be vocal leaders. That way, you can really make a difference in Tarpon Springs. It's going to take someone different to make a difference. And this type of stuff goes a long ways. It's a great day for our city, and just very proud that we actually worked hard to help everyone in Tarpon Springs. And during this whole time, during the COVID stuff, how we were very lenient on bills and fines with water stuff, they did a great job. And the presentation that the gentleman gave back on, I believe, either May 11th or May 25th, that guy was phenomenal. You guys asked him every question, he responded back right away, didn't even skip a beat. Those are the type of presentations we want from consultants. Those are the people, you know, great presentations, and it's a great day. It's a great day for everybody in Tarpon Springs, because you're saving money on your water waste rates. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item? I hear none. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And we're now going to the commission comments. The only comment I want to make is, if we pass the ordinance, which I support, by the year of 2024, our water and sewer average bill will be 113, which is going to be the lowest average of 115. So it will be the, very, very low compared to the other cities in the area. And reducing the sewer and the water and sewer by 2.2%, it will be no increase for 2023 and 2024. Any, any comments? Mayor Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Irene, I'm not sure how this would work, but can we at least put a notice? I know we have like a little note box on our bills that we receive. Can we notice the, the residents about this? And then also highlight it in our newsletter that goes out quarterly or biannally? And the, and the water bills as well, too, please? And at the end of the day, it's, I want to support any cost reduction we can. I, I do want to give credit to Paul Smith and his department and Ron and his department from being able to analyze how much capital items and repairs and things along those lines are needed on a yearly basis, and then really evaluate saying what that actual cost is going to need to be on a monthly basis for our residents is not an easy task. So I, I do have to commend both of you all for taking that, that step to doing this. This is a second reduction that we've done now since I've been on the board, so it's great to see the continued reductions. Thank you.
I would just, thank you. I would just echo the Vice Mayor's thoughts and also support what you mentioned about giving notice to our residents. I think that's important for them to know if they're not watching the meeting tonight, but we do send out bits of information in the water bill, so if, I don't know if the board wants to support the Vice Mayor in consensus by doing that, but I definitely think it's a good idea. And kudos to staff. Also, I'll add that this is definitely not the first time that we've reduced the water and sewer rates. We've done it, this is the third time since I've been on the board, so I'm happy that we can reduce any costs to the residents and make our city more affordable to live in. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for their time and effort on this. It's a great project overall, and I support letting the residents know about it as well.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
No, thank you, Ron. Thanks the entire staff.
In regards sending notification out, that's normal process. They'll do it. They've done it before. I don't think it'll be an issue to do that, in my opinion. But also if we put a notification on the, on the website as well, and let everybody know, I think it's a good idea to do that. With that, roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzas?
Yes. Next is item number 20, our Resolution 2021-43, Budget Resolution. City Attorney, please read the resolution.
Resolution 2021-43, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. That was a reading of Resolution 2021-43 by title only.
Thank you. Staff report.
Ron Herring, Finance Director. You know, every, like mid-year, I try to do a budget resolution for anything that's come up during the year that we didn't account for. Budget Resolution 2021-43 is brought before you to budget for items that were not previously budgeted for in the fiscal year 2021 budget. All the items are listed in the cover letter, tried to detail them there. The bulk of items are for funding the city has received in the form of grants and insurance reimbursements, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item? Hear none? Chair will detain the motion.
We have approval? Second.
Mr. Herring, I just want to thank you for the update. I also want to thank you for spending time with me and discussing all those items. But I am glad that we received the COVID cares reimbursement, $350,000. So far, we received $524,000, and that leaves us with $85,000 left from FEMA, right? So we did pretty well. Commissioner Terapany, you got any comments? Commissioner Donovan?
Uh, yeah, just to clarify, Ron, if you could just touch base on what that Hayes Road funding is in there?
That was funding from the developer for the roads out there at the Antcoat Harbors Apartments area there. It was a cover of the expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vaticaris, any comments?
No, just as far as an expectation of the, the COVID grants that we'll be getting from the federal government, we still don't have any additional information as far as when that five million, that first $5 million will be forthcoming.
The American Rescue Plan Act, yes. From what I, the money's with the state right now, for, for cities under 50,000 population or you're titled a non-intentile de unit, non-intentile of the unit, I think I'm saying that right? So the state still has the money, they apply, they apply for an extent, one extension, they might do a second, but yes, we are scheduled to get the 10.7 million. We will get half of it, hopefully within the next month, we're hoping, and then a year later, you get the second half.
So what do we do, another budget resolution after, with that, or we'll do one at the end of the year?
Probably once we decide, probably when you decide what you want to use it on, yes, we'd be doing a budget resolution.
But it, it'd also be shown as revenue as well.
Correct. Like grant revenues coming in.
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzas?
Yes. Item number 22 is the ordinance 2021-08, deleting rules and procedures from the code ordinance. This is the second reading. City Attorney, please read the resolution.
This is ordinance 2021-08, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, deleting sections 2-101 through 2-159 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, providing for the effective day disorderness. This is the second final reading of ordinance 2021-08 by title only. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on July 14, 2021.
Mr. Trask, do you want to explain what this ordinance is all about?
Yes, Mayor, this is the ordinance that will take the rules of procedures out of the code book and place them in the resolution, which is the next agenda item. This is being done for the purposes of your annual review of your rules of procedure that you wanted to do. Doing it by resolution allows you to do that in one meeting versus having two public hearings. And so we're deleting it from the code book, and this is the ordinance that does that actual deletion.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
Peterlax, 514 Ashland Avenue. Yes, Mr. Trask mentions that this purpose of a resolution allows you to review it every year. But you can do that anyway with an ordinance. You just have to have two meetings. But what he forgets or neglects to say is by being a resolution, any commissioner, city manager, mayor, vice mayor can request to have rules or procedure placed on an agenda, and those rules changed at any time. Wait till June or an annual basis. I bet you Jesse Burke's turning in the graves right now. Because with this board, and who knows what the future boards will do, if they don't like something, well, let's just put it on the agenda and change that rule. And the next section will discuss some of those rules. But they're in the Code of Ordinances because they are ordinance- But they're in the Code of Ordinances because they are ordinances, not just resolutions that can be changed on a whim. Code of ordinances, it restricts you to the rules. A resolution allows you to change the rules whenever you please. Get a couple of you together, hey, well, I don't like this, I don't like that, or I want to put this in, I want to put that in. And what, you're afraid of having a second meeting on an ordinance or you're afraid of having to advertise? Which will be discussed again in the next section. I don't know what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item?
Chris Rabowski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Yeah, you just have to listen to what Peter said. Guy's going to pass rules that you can change the rules. I mean, what? What kind of board gets to pass a rule that says we can change the rules whenever we choose? Code of ordinances. Why? You're going to give yourselves a power ad hoc, change anything anytime. Government is dwindling in front of us. It's crumbling. This is how you're going to do it, huh? Destroy democracy, destroy our way of life. It's just hard to believe. Anyway, if you do this, then this board will have to be changed and it will be changed and then we'll just put it back. Can all be fixed. Thank God for our system that allows us to vote out problematic commissioners, politicians, power hungry, money hungry. This cannot stand. It just, um, it's so unfortunate. Anyway, do what you gotta do. We can fix it later. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on this item?
Boni Yotis Kuyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. And Andy Samarcus will be donating two minutes of your time.
You have six minutes.
We see where this all had come from. Citizens coming up, being more vocal than ever, uh, coming out, asking for transparency and honesty in our Tarpon Springs. Being able to reach out to the citizens, engage with them better through all, all different aspects. You know, when it comes to the city agenda items, I mean, look, we, we had a fumble of agenda items. We, four o'clock last night, four items got removed. Some of the wording got mixed up with the principal planning. I didn't have that new document and yeah, I'll get it from my commissioner that I'm running, but that's a disservice to our community. It's a disservice to the board. It's, it's a disservice to the structure. I mean, how many of you all have the time on a commission meeting night? When some backup material has been brought in, then you have time to review it? It's not fair to everybody. It's not fair to what we run as a government. Now, individual opinions. Individual members of the city commission must not represent their own views or recommendations as those of the city commission unless the majority of the board of commissioners has officially voted to approve such action. City commissioners making recommendations or expressing their views not then approved by a majority of the board of commissioners shall indicate that such is expressed as a private citizen. Public comments or opinions should contain no promises to the public that may be construed to the binding on the city. Individual members of the city commission shall refrain from expressing their position on a matter to be considered at an upcoming commission meeting. Commission members are encouraged to consider the input comments of other commission members and the public before expressing their position on matters to be considered at commission meetings. And if the mayor commissioner wishes to provide additional information or explanation, it is to be given to the city manager to be added to the agenda backup in order to be available to the public. So the citizens of Tarpon Springs want to know right now, who recommended this part under individual opinions, A, B, and C? If it was a city manager, he needs to come forward and admit it. If it was one of the commissioners, just come forward and admit it. It, what's the worst that's going to happen? Um, but for you guys to go sit there and tell a commissioner, they're not allowed to step outside their house and give an opinion on something. I mean, that's, it's pretty communistic if you ask me. That doesn't work in a society like that. That's why we come to our representatives to give our opinions and our, and our representatives should be able to say, I agree with that, or I'm not sure, or I don't know if I'll support it until the time comes. You know, we're running an open society and the fact that certain people or candidates or people on the board are more vocal and using certain avenues and media tools to communicate their expressions and, and it might hinder and, and affect the ability of some other people who aren't taking advantage of that on the political, uh, on the, on, on the political scheme, well, that's, that's too bad. Just because certain people aren't taking advantage of their First Amendment right to get their opinions out and their goals and what they want to view as a city or, you know, as a possible commissioner or someone on the board. That's, oh, well, so this idea being brought up is just made to stifle, uh, opinions that we strongly feel and represent, that some of these commissioners represent for us. And the donation of minutes, how are we going to fix this issue? I mean, I don't know, I'm hoping when the next board comes on, we'll, we'll bring back the Zoom. We'll bring back at least one minute for someone to talk from Zoom. That way we can speed it up since people are upset about, you know, this time being extended, but stifling commissioners' comments before, you know, a decision's made. It's very communistic, it's not cool. Um, that's all going to be changed right away. And I mean, are we violating sunshine law at that point? Let's say commissioner steps outside one day, starts talking about an issue and to somebody and there's a witness right next to them. I mean, you guys are creating, opening up a can of worms on your government that's not in the best interest on the city itself. So we're going to be back, then we had the quasi judicial hearing where Mr. Trask, I don't know if it was an accident, where he asked if any public emails to be read into the record. I don't know if public emails are allowed to be read during the quasi judicial, so I was just throwing that out there. And, um, guys, there's plenty of ways, I sent that email out, just like, uh, Commissioner Carr and Commissioner Terapany stated, letting the people know about the reduced water rates going on. I sent you that letter from that city in Ohio where they sent out that postcard with their scan and you just scan it and you can go right to their website to get the citizen engagement. That's what it's about. It's not about stifling public comment. It's not about doing it because we don't like what being set up here. Um, but it's going to change and this opinion thing right here is going to change immediately. Thank you.
Is this yours?
Yeah.
My guys in the 1515 Riverside Drive, I don't want to take up too much of the time tonight because I don't think you're going to listen to anything that anyone had to say up here any which way. So I don't think you're changing. I, I just think that everything I'm watching is a shutting down of free speech. You're looking to stifle city commissioners, you're looking to stifle residents. We've shut down Zoom calls. We've shut down emails. I know that there's been a ton of emails sent out tonight regarding the sustainability, but they don't get read. So I'm not in agreement to what is being done. Um, I'm strongly protesting in the strongest way possible, but I don't want to keep this going because I'd like everyone to go home tonight. I know you're not changing your opinion and you're going to vote for this any which way, but it will be changed. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Jeannie Anakin. I live over Rumbeyer Street. I'm not familiar with all your proceedings that you people do, but from my understanding and, someone correct me if I'm wrong, you want to have a one and done. You have one meeting, you guys make your decision and that's it. So if I'm not able to come to that meeting, my neighbor's not able to come, then our voice is not heard. Am I correct in understanding that? Somebody answer me?
No.
Anybody?
This is not questions and answers, this is only comments, ma'am.
Okay, well, the thing is, is when people don't have a choice, they live in a communist country. Now, to my understanding, this is still the United States. And I know a lot of people want to stop free speech. They don't want to hear what their constituents have to say. But I think it's important. I think you took a job, you said, put me in this position because I'm here for you and I'm here for the community. And I'm going to do the best I can for all the people, not just a few select. Okay, well then now's your time, step up and do that. Stand up for the people that you asked to put you in your position. Do the right thing. Don't vote us down, don't try and shut us up. We don't try and shut you up. We come, we want to discuss what's going on, we want to understand what's going on because this is our community. This is where we live. We're not passing through, we're not snowbirds. I've lived in Tarpon over 30 years. I've seen a lot of changes, some good, some bad. This is very bad and shame on you for even thinking about doing this. Why would you want to stop the people that you asked? Give me the opportunity, represent you, to shut us down and not hear what we have to say. I think that's a disgrace. And all of you should think about it very seriously before you vote on this. Because it really is a choice, a choice you have to make. We can't make you do anything when we put you in these positions, but we trust you. We believe that you're going to do the best you can for us. So you can either be part of the solution or you can be the problem. That's your choice tonight and that's all I have to say.
Mrs. Samarcus, don't do that again, please. No clapping, you know that. Yeah, but we also have rules. Thank you so much. Any other public comments? I hear none. Okay, the chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Are there any commission comments?
I've got a couple. I've got a couple.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, just to, to clarify some things for, for the public that are watching, um, there's resolutions, there's ordinances, uh, Mr. Delakis was talking about. Uh, a resolution is a one-time reading and ordinance is twice. Uh, we're not stifling public comment. Public comment is welcome throughout the meeting still. You have four minutes at the beginning of the meeting to come talk about anything you want. Um, you have four minutes for each additional item to talk about that specific item, up to four minutes. Nothing's being stifled. You could send an email to the board. We all receive emails. We read the emails, they go into the record, they're just not read aloud. It's the same thing that we've done for years. So, and that, I think this is a great cleanup. Uh, we've had a workshop on it, we've had multiple meetings on it. Um, at the end of the day, I, I hope it's going to help, um, streamline the public comment and some individuals who have, uh, been taking advantage of the, the system, I would say, for quite some time, um, to prolong and hear themselves speak, um, over the past six or eight months. Um, at the end of the day, it's always great to have public comment coming to us. We always welcome more of it. Uh, it's great to see more people involved as well. Thank you.
Any other commission comments?
I do, um,
Should I take yours? Go ahead.
I want to make sure we're voting on the ordinance to eliminate the rules, is that correct? The resolution adopting the rules is going to come next agenda item?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mr. Trask, as far as the, the advantages and disadvantages, I know that was discussed at one time of having rules of procedure by resolution rather than, um, ordinance. Can you share your thoughts on that?
Most cities do not have the rules of procedure of their commissions in the code book. Most cities use resolution as their format. For example, the City of Dunedin, for example, the City of Madeira Beach, those are two other cities that I represent. They're done by resolution. They're always done by resolution. Um, as for the time, the City of Dunedin only offers three minutes to the public. The City of Tarpon Springs is at this point four. But as for whether it should be done by ordinance or resolution, it was my recommendation to change it. Take it out of the code book. Uh, it doesn't need to be there. Um, these are your rules, they're not the public's rules. This is how you govern your meetings, how you're going to handle certain things during the meetings. It's not how the people in the audience have an opportunity to rule what you're doing. These are your rules. So it was my advice to you to take it out of the code book and put it in a resolution. Um, and I think that that will then go along with what you had been asking before is, is an annual review. If you want to do an annual review and make no changes, then there is no resolution that needs to be changed. But you don't, you're not going to change things willy-nilly. It's going to be coming to you as an agenda item. You, I'm going to be required to prepare a resolution, the public is going to be able to see that resolution. And any resolution changing the rules of procedure, if you adopt the one in the next agenda item, is going to have to repeal certain sections of the prior resolution. So there is a process. The public will be allowed to address it and speak, just like they're doing it tonight. Um, this just allows you to do it in a manner that is less formal. Um, you won't have to have two public hearings to do it.
Okay. No, you, you answered the question as far as the resolution versus the ordinance. Um, a long time ago, 25 years ago, um, when I was in the city manager's seat and there was a lot of hand wringing and everything over ordinances and, and resolutions. And I used to tell, and it was difficult to coming to a decision, I used to tell the commission, I said, look, make a decision. You don't like it two weeks, you change it, whether it's a resolution or an ordinance. And, um, from my perspective, um, I, I don't know what's going to be approved in the resolution, but I, I, I'm kind of, um, uh, we're going to get to that point. I'll, I'll, I'll save my comments for that. But as far as whether, to me, it's whether it's by ordinance or resolution, if, if a commission wants to do something and it's, it's just determined to do it, it's going to do it whether it's a resolution or an ordinance. And, um, quite frankly, if, if there's a, uh, next year when there's a new board, if that board wants to re, uh, memorialize the, the, uh, the rules of procedure in the form of an ordinance, it can certainly do that. So that would be for a discussion of another day. But it looks like we're heading to a certain direction, um, with this commission and, and I really appreciate everybody's comments, but I've heard all of you all say that it isn't going to change anybody's mind with what you're saying. So I do have some comments later, but I just wanted to deal with this one as far as the resolution versus the ordinance. And thank you, Mr. Trask, for sharing that information. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other commission comments, questions? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Lahusas?
Yes. The next is resolution 2021-22, adoption of rules and procedures. City Attorney, if you please, read the resolution and present the item. City Attorney, if you please, read the resolution and present the item.
Mayor Commissioners, this is Resolution 2021-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, adopting certain rules of procedure for the Board of Commissioners, repealing all resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date hereof. That was the reading of Resolution 2021-22 by title only. I'm not going to go over each one of these items that have been shown in the draft. I wanted to remind you that this has been discussed on a number of occasions. There was a work session, there was direction given to the city clerk and me as the city attorney to make certain changes to your rules of procedure. They were set forth in the strikeout underlined format. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about any of the changes that are shown in the strikeout underlined format that's in your agenda packet. I do want you to be aware of the fact that the city clerk has passed out on the dais a little note suggesting that there would be a need of a couple of changes in this document or just bring it to your attention. And I just wanted to pass the floor over to Irene to go over those three things since she prepared these three bullet points so she can clear up, you know, those particular issues. Irene?
And I just wanted to say that was not put on the dais. That was just given to the city attorney as we were speaking, just so you would know what the new items were.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did forward, I did forward a resolution to the board yesterday with pretty much the same information. The first, so we had several meetings, the last meeting being on June 8th. And the items that were changed at that meeting were as follows. On page eight, Article Three, Section 1A, the elimination of donation of time. And it also clarified who is allowed to speak at work sessions. That was added. We were given direction to eliminate any consensus and due by motions. So, there's no consensus anymore, so it's clear direction. If you look on page 10, Section 8A, we did miss one of the consensus items. So, that will be corrected in the resolution. When we noticed it, it was too late, it was after 6:00. Also, on page nine, Section Three, the wording for where the fifth commissioner would seat, be seated on the dais in speaking with Commissioner Vaticiotis, the, we added language to make note of that. It was previously never in the code. It was just assumed that the last seat was always for the newest position, whereas the current rules say, such as the city manager sits to the left at the mayor and so forth in that section. And those were the only things that were added as of the June 8th meeting in this strike through and underline. And also just to, the other item I did send out, it was, I take full responsibility and I did the strike through and underline copy so the public and all from the last meeting would be able to see what the changes were. And in doing so, at the last June 8th meeting, when we, when the elimination of donation of time was taken out, I did not add the section back saying what the previous, you know, thing was about giving the two minutes and underline the, you know, strike through that. So, I did that, you know, I added that back in. And like I said, that was not done intentionally, it was just a mis-sight of mine. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Trask, any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay. We're going to go to public comments on this item. Any public comments on this item?
Margot Lizer, 514 Ashland Avenue, Tarpon Springs. Again, let me tell you, the population of Tarpon is 25,783 folks. 29% of them are over 65, and that equates to 7,477 citizens. 11.9% of them are disabled, and that is 3,068 citizens. That's a total of 10,545 citizens in Tarpon Springs that are over 65 and disabled. That's almost half of our population here in Tarpon Springs. Why would you want to restrict access to these meetings? Today, you saw an elderly woman come up here sick and frail because she has a passion for the Union Academy and she wanted her voice heard. I don't understand why you would want to silence the voices of the elderly and the disabled who are the most vulnerable in our community. At the last meeting, the elderly woman came up here because her streets were flooding and she called you guys. She tried, she tried meeting with you, no one returned her calls. And she had to come up here, frail and over, an elderly woman, to ask you guys for help because you were ignoring her. That's crazy to me. And then the next one, when you debated, if you wanted to hear the emails because there were too many to be read in comment over the Morgan Group Development on the Anclaw River, those are your citizens, those are your constituents. Why would you not want to hear from them? Like Chris Harbosky always says, "What are you doing? What are you guys doing up there?" In the section, in your charter, Section Eight, Letter M, it says that you are obligated to pass ordinance resolutions necessary for the health, convenience, safety, and general welfare of your residents. COVID is not done. We're spiking up. Last week, we had over 7,000 cases in Pinellas County alone. Look it up, Google it. So, it's not over, and you want to cancel Zoom? Who uses that, the elderly, the disabled? She came out, she faced that. That woman last week, at the last meeting, she faced a storm and COVID just to hear, so you could hear what she had to say because you weren't returning her calls. And now you guys want to silence those people in our community? I don't get it. And that is, shame on all of you for doing that. Thank you.
Mr. Samarcus? Yeah, because I'm going to, I'm not going to allow that anymore. Please do not do that. Thank you, good night.
Go ahead, please.
Jackie Turner, 792 Chesapeake Drive. Just thank you to the city attorney for clarifying the point about the resolution versus ordinance. I think that was very helpful. And I do understand and appreciate the need to clean up the codes. And so, I have a better understanding. Thank you very much for making this change, making it a resolution. However, I think, as was said by others, there is that concern still that is lying within us of the potential to changing these resolutions, you know, meeting to meeting. You know, we like a certain amount of consistency, so there's a predictability in how things are conducted. I appreciate all of the work that went into these edits here. I wanted to bring a few points up for your consideration. The first was there in the Article One, Point Number Four, about the individual opinion. As Mr. Crowley has it stated, quite frankly, if this was in place tonight, the discussion that y'all had regarding the principal planner and sustainability positions, that would have likely been a violation of this because there was a lot of discussion, and I was glad to hear it as a citizen, you discussing these points, which of course it was the planning position, but it crossed over into the sustainability position. And you could have been in violation of that, and that's concerning. We want to know as citizens, who's representing us, what your thoughts and your stances are on positions before it comes to the roll call. So, you know, as was stated, you know, we want to be able to have those discussions, whether it's via email or a phone call, or if I run into you in Walmart and say, "Hey, what do you think about this issue in the city?" I don't want to feel like y'all are stifled to say, "I can't discuss this, you've just got to wait to see how I vote." I feel that we're better than that. So, that's my concern on Article One, Point Four. Going to Article One, Point Number Eight, about the ad hoc committees. May perhaps this is a procedural thing with the language. It was, the strike through was about the language on voting to establish the committee. So, how will a committee be established? So, because it says a committee will be established, how will that? So, I don't know if that's an attorney question. Just wanted to bring that up to the attention. And on to my last point, Article Two, about the agenda. So, what is the plan for adhering to Point Number Seven about stating that the public hearing must begin at 7:30? So, again, are you constraining yourself too much? I don't know. That's where we like a certain amount of flexibility within these parameters so that way you can conduct your business, but also not be limiting yourself too much. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't mean to do that. But I do have a bell, isn't that cool? And fires.
That is pretty cool.
You should ring that every time you go up and down the aisle.
Christopher Bosky, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. So, on page, I guess, eight of 14, number six, distribution of agenda packets. Again, it says, "The city manager shall be responsible for notifying affected individuals of a particular item on the agenda. Such notice need not be in writing, but may be by telephone if conditions warrant." Now, this hasn't been altered or added to, but you know it hasn't been obeyed. The city manager hasn't been notifying people since way, way back that they're going to be talked about by this board. So, what you need to add to this is a sentence that says, "Well, then that topic will not be discussed if the city manager didn't bother to let those citizens know until such time as they can be notified." So, if anybody can demonstrate that those people that were going to be affected weren't notified by the city manager, something needs to be done about it. Or you need to say, "What sort of ramifications, punishments will befall a sitter manager that doesn't do his job?" So, if the city manager's not going to do his job, are you going to hold him to that? Or are you just going to keep letting him not do his job? He has not been letting us know. And you know this, for many, many years, he's been not letting anybody know that, you know, what's going on up here, keeping it secret. I don't know if that's laziness, I don't know if that's on purpose to deceive people. Whatever it is, it can't be allowed to stand, it can't continue. So, that needs to be altered, and since this is a draft, you can do that. And then, Board and Staff Comments. Once again, however, no person shall be permitted to raise controversial issues involving substantial contemplation unless such items shall first be placed on the agenda for consideration. Means you can't vote during Board and Staff Comments. However, every single one of you guys voted to stifle the reading of emails January 7th for the meeting of the 15th. Now, two of you voted to go ahead and allow those emails to be read. Three of you voted against it. They were all legal votes, according to your rules here. Can't have taken that vote. Your city attorney allowed it, he actually advised it. So, don't pretend that you can vote on things during Board and Staff Comments. Unless, of course, you're going to change these rules, which I believe now you can, regardless of what you say. I believe I saw a sentence in here that says you can vote by consensus if you guys want to change any of these rules at any time. Wow. That's interesting. That doesn't sound American, does it? So, anyway, the least you could do is hold the city manager to his job in your own rules, make him do what he's supposed to do. And if he doesn't, at least, you know, some, somebody call somebody, knock on their door and say, "Hey, the city's going to be talking about you. You might want to come down here and defend yourself." This can't keep going on like this. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item?
Pony Otis Cuyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. I understand that these rules are for the board to control the meeting and take care of the business of the day, but I think Mr. Trask has an obligation to us as the residents to explain to us about this individual opinions. I'm, I want a detailed explanation from it. Unless you guys talked about it detailed in the budget or the work session, we'll have to go back to review it all. What does that mean? I mean, if I go walk up to Mr. Carr and ask him a question about agenda item, he can't talk to me about it? He can't give me an opinion on it? I mean, what are we doing here? And then, we got this ex parte communications. Well, I mean, how are you supposed to have ex parte communications with people involved with properties and not be able to discuss your opinion or your stance on it? Is that social media only? Is that, to me, it sounds like in the public. Once I step outside of my front door, it's fair game. I can't talk about anything on agenda item coming up. So, I'd like to have explanation. I don't want to be put into a situation if I'm elected commissioner down the road, someone goes to ask me a question and I have to look at them and say I can't answer it. I mean, what disservice does that do? And the CRA board, the CRA board right now has too much power because it's the Board of Commissioners. I mean, if we want you guys to decide what roads and places to fix, you're not helping the community out. That's why one of my main suggestions is to, the board, pick people, just like you did the Sustainability Committee, pick people from all different parts of the community to help redevelop it, to come together with ideas and, you know, move forward. And what, now you guys are CRA board, you can't talk to nobody about some issues in the future? I mean, please, let's have, give us 30 seconds, a minute of this individual opinions prior to an item being discussed. Because what, you can't talk about an item that's not going to be discussed three months down the road? Or we can't talk about one that's going to be coming up on this week's meeting? I mean, a lot of unanswered questions and it's, it's really not good for the board for citizen engagement, and I would really like that clarified. And I believe our city attorney has a right. He's really great at articulating stuff, you know. I just, I hope he defends me like he defends a lot of you all, and he'll be fine. But he needs to articulate what that means legally for you all about individual opinions prior to the decision. Does that mean forever? Does that mean you have a list of, you know, items that the city manager gives you a list of that tells you, "Hey, next BOC meeting might happen and three BOC might, three BOC meetings is going to come up on the agenda." So, you guys are stuck now with all this open information that you can't really get into detail and give your lead as a vocal leader to see if your constituents agree with it or don't. So, that's my biggest issue about it, all the minutes, all that stuff doesn't matter. The shrinking down, none of that matters, I don't care. It just shows that the people of Tarpon Springs were winning and some people didn't like to hear it all. So, one thing I've realized is, the softer my tone, the more empowered my voice is. And as these days progress, that's what's going to happen. And the movement's here, the movement's here, it's people coming from all over, standing up and being vocal, and that's what it's about. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Before I start, Ms. Sanger has kindly donated her minutes while that potential is still available. Peter Lackus, 514 Ashland Avenue. First, as Mr. Harboski was relating, Page 9, waiver of rules. The vote of a simple majority of the city commission may waive any provision of these rules at any meeting. So just to put that into the record. Now, I do need to clarify a couple things. Commissioner Carr, the special session, was one of the first ones to say he didn't want to hear anybody talk, yet it turned out y'all did have to vote, and you did allow people talking. Now, I guess some of the people on this board don't know how to add up. Because if four of us come up here and talk four minutes each, that's 16 minutes. But here in Page 10, under public comments, you want to remove the donation a minute. So if I get three people to donate, that limits me to 10 minutes and you don't have to sit for another six minutes listening to others. I think it's more that you don't like hearing what one person may have to say in a combined aspect. Now, something also I happened to notice in here that somehow kind of quietly has been ignored. Page 11, under ordinances. It goes on, there's a strike of the ordinance section at the top, and then it goes, "Each order of resolution shall be introduced in writing," blah, blah, blah. And then the strikeout part is the part that I'm concerned about. "But ordinances must be read by title or in full on at least two separate days, and shall at least 10 days prior to adoption be noticed once in a duly, duly newspaper duly qualified to publish such meetings. The notice proposed enactment state shall state the date, time, and place of the meeting, the title or titles of the proposed ordinance, ordinances, and the place within the city where the proposed ordinance may be inspected by the public. The notice shall also advise that interested parties may appear at the meeting and be heard with respect to the proposed ordinance." That's what struck out. I don't see anything in red stating that ordinances now have to be advertised. So according to what y'all are proposing, any ordinance y'all are going to put forward is going to be not advertised as they should. Now, maybe there's a little section here, and there was something in the quasi judicial thing about the, uh, attorney would have to state where it was, I think it was on the second reading. But here, you're taking out the requirements for advertising. So that needs to be looked at. But lastly, I do want to go over what we had and what we now are proposing not to have. You saw Ms. Dabs right here almost faint in front of your faces because she's got an issue. Look at me, Mr. Carr, instead of you playing on the computer. I'm talking to y'all, you can show respect. She almost fainted. Why? Because she has something she wants to bring to your attention. Why can't she be at home and watch on TV and call in on the phone when the issue comes up? We did that before successfully. Same thing for Zoom. Why all of a sudden, it can't be done? We've got the technology, we've got the people who know how to do it. Y'all managed to do it fine. What, because you don't want to hear from more people that can't come to the meetings? Any? Yes, Mr. Trass happened to have a memory slip back to how we were doing it, and he asked Irene for any emails to be read, but according to your current rules, pre-COVID, we don't read emails. What's wrong with that? What is wrong with that from hearing from the citizens? And as to Mr. Carr's point about having one hearing or two hearings, well, the whole reason about an ordinance is you do get the second shot, just like Jeanie mentioned. If she couldn't come to the first ordinance reading, she can maybe come to the second one and still voice her opinion. If it's just a resolution, one shot, and she misses it, her voice and her neighbor's voice is absent. Y'all ran for this job to be our representatives. And part of that means doing what's necessary, whether you like hearing what we say or don't. And if you did more of the things that the public wanted you to do, we'd be praising you more instead of shaming you. Why we come up here to have to scold you or reprimand you because of these stupid things you're doing? What is the purpose? You're cutting out your citizens and people from being able to communicate to you in ways that allow them to share their thoughts, their knowledge, their experiences, their concerns. And, it just appears that every time we turn around, you're finding ways to do that. So, I really hope that you look at implementing some of the things that y'all had done before. Emails, phone call in, Zooms. That would be a good start. I know you're going to cut out our time to talk longer than four minutes, but you may have to suffer the consequences. And also, why is this the last thing on the agenda where people who were here earlier wanted to speak about it? Ms. Jennings, Mr. Wagonfer, and some other people that wanted to speak about this issue? You drag it out, you have it at the end, so less people are around to talk to you about all these things. It's just sad. Sad. And y'all could do better. And you know that, Mayor.
Any other comments?
Good evening, Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. I've been listening for quite some time, quite many meetings, and there's a common denominator that I've been listening to. I don't know if you guys are hearing it. Mayor, you start off every single meeting by asking for civility, and yet, we kind of go down the tubes each and every time. Most of what people are coming up here is not to give you compliments, but to complain about the way you're making decisions, not just you, but how you're making decisions, what, the things you're trying to shut us down. We can't all be crazy. I mean, we're all saying the exact same thing. And the more you, the more we come up here to say, the more you kind of want to shut it down. And it becomes a vicious cycle. And we, we keep coming up here and saying, "You can't do this, you shouldn't do this." And then on top of that, you just do it more. And this is why these meetings go on constantly. It has nothing to do with two minutes adding here or two minutes adding there. It has to do with, you're not listening to the people that put you in office. I being one of them. We've had meetings before, you and I speaking. You ask me why. I'm telling you why. You guys are doing whatever you want to do. That's why people are coming up here. We all have something better to do. I'd love to come up here and say, "You guys did a great job with this, you did a great job with that." But I can't. Because I'm sitting here listening to you guys making decisions to shut everybody down. I have people sitting up there that are being called out for being disrespectful. People are being asked to leave. You asked this person to leave because she clapped for two seconds? I know you have rules. But you got to be realistic on these rules. She didn't really do anything. I mean, we're really be playing semantics. I mean, it's really, it's embarrassing to sit here. I have to tell you that. If I, I'd be lying to tell you anything different. And I know you're going to say something because you can't hold back. But this is not the way you treat people. And you know this. I really wish I could see a change that you'd, you'd try to show some respect to the people, to the residents of this city. That's all I could tell you.
I'm not going to say anything, Mike.
Okay.
We got you four minutes, thank you very much.
Well, I didn't hear the bell, am I done?
Okay.
Was it?
Sir, sir. You're not, you don't have the mic, please. You don't have the floor. Wait. Go ahead, continue till you, till you finish.
I'm just, I'm, like I said, I'm shocked at the way you guys are acting.
Okay.
And it's, it's very, very disheartening to sit here and to watch this, you know? That's all I could say. Have a good evening.
You too. Any other public comments? Here now? The Chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Well, we discussed these rules and procedures several times already, and I'm not going to go back and repeat any of the things that we've done all this time, so. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I just got a couple comments. City Attorney, just for clarification, how many cities does your firm represent? Off the top of your head.
We're the city attorneys for nine municipalities in Peninsula County, but we also represent a number of different other municipalities throughout the state on certain specific matters. But we're the city attorneys for nine right now.
Okay. So out of the nine, do any of them read public, or read emails into the record or Zoom calls currently?
No.
Okay. And then, I believe, was, was Oldsmar, how many minutes did they have to speak? And it's at the beginning of their meeting, outside of a quasi?
It's five minutes in Oldsmar.
Okay. But they can only speak at the very beginning, right?
No, they can speak at the beginning and, they can speak on anything on the agenda at the beginning if they want to, except for public hearing items. And if they have comments on public hearing items, they must address them when that agenda item comes up.
Okay, so outside of public hearing, they only have five minutes to speak on everything that's on the agenda, including things that aren't on the agenda too, right?
If they wish, but they also have the opportunity to speak five minutes at public comment and then address each individual agenda item separately if they wanted to do that. This just gives them the option at the very beginning of the meeting to talk about anything that's on the agenda other than public hearings.
Right, okay. I'll go home. Okay, and then Dunedin is, it's three minutes, you said?
Three minutes in Dunedin, yes.
Okay, and then Tarpon's four minutes, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, I don't know, it doesn't seem like we're, we're limiting public comments with other cities that you represent. Something that came up as well, I just want to call out is, one of the things that the city has been doing is, obviously presentations are important, but they can last a while. There could be a lot of discussions amongst the board as well, too. They're typically one of the first things on the agenda before we jump into the consent agenda and special consent and resolutions and ordinances. That's actually being moved towards the back of the meeting to help get to the, what's, what's the way you call it, Tom? The order of the day or the?
The business of the day.
Business of the day. Yeah, so I think that's going to help the meetings out a lot, to really, I think it's respectful to the applicants that are sitting in the audience that need to talk. And then, just to touch base on the individual opinions, I mean, I'm happy to have some further clarification on this one from the attorney, but this is how I understand and I recall it, is how the discussions went. It's not necessarily if someone walks up to you in Publix. It's not necessarily if someone walks out of the house. It's more like, we don't want memorandums be sent to the commission, and then you already know how I feel about it before we even heard the input of the public comment, which everyone's talking about tonight, that you want to make sure that the public comments heard before we make a decision. And then there's also going to be a further discussion amongst the commissioners that, Commissioner Terry Panney, Commissioner Donovan, Commissioner Vadikiotis, and Mayor think a lot differently than I do. So when they make a comment, it'll spark something in my mind, saying, "Well, that makes a lot of sense, I didn't look at it that way." So, you may be leaning one way coming in the meeting, but then you get additional information from the public or from the commission, and you're like, "Okay, well, I, I'm not right in this situation, I agree with it, I should vote for or against this." So, this paragraph isn't to prevent the commissioners, myself or anyone else on the board, from speaking to anybody, talking about it. It's just saying, "Let's be respectful to the residents, let's be respectful to the board and to the staff or the applicant to hear more information on it before we come and have our minds made up already." And we're telling people in the audience, I'm sorry, we're telling people in the public, you know, "I'm going to vote no on this tonight, I'm voting yes on this tonight," before we even heard the application. So, I think it's just a respectful situation for all of us that we refrain how we feel about a position. Now, we could share, you know, "I'm leaning this way, I'm leaning this way," but that's not saying, "I'm going to vote no, I'm not going to vote yes." So that just gives you a little more insight of what this individual opinion's about. I do want to just share that a little bit with, with you all as well. So, at the end of the day, all of us are termed out, I mean, not all termed out, but none of us are running for reelection anytime soon for the current position that we're in. So, I mean, the new board could come in and change this in April, like in the second meeting. So, if there's issues, then the new board can do it. Thanks.
More comments? Yes?
Yeah, I have a suggestion for number four. It's Page 3 of the actual draft for 4B. I think exactly what we're getting at is, "Individual members of the city commission shall refrain from expressing their position on a matter." I think we should add "to the commission" or "to the board" to be considered at an upcoming commission meeting. Because I think that's really the crux of what we're getting at, and the Vice Mayor touched on it. I don't care, you know, if somebody comes up to me in my yard or at the store, you know, if somebody wants to reach out via text, call, whatever. I don't have any problem with any of us discussing anything with any of the residents. I think more so, it just comes down to when I know before a meeting how somebody's going to vote because they said as much. Something like that. So that's something for the board to consider. I think that would just kind of take the drama out of it where it just says, "Hey, as long as you don't CC me or send me an email saying, 'Hey, here's what I'm going to do on this item,' I don't really care." And then also for C, I just want to know what the process is for an individual commissioner, vice mayor, mayor, whoever it may be, to give that additional information or explanation to the board. You know, so for example, we're having this workshop coming up on Thursday, and I wanted to get additional backup to the board on a potential CIP item. And it got sent out today via email. I had sent it to the city manager, and I had asked him, "Please notify the board that this be being put into the backup, please add it into the backup." And then he sent it, and in that backup, while it contains, you know, pictures and a synopsis of the situation, you pretty much understand my feelings about it. So I guess, I'm just wondering for, if any, is B and C almost in, in conflict? Because I want to be able to provide additional information and backup, and you can almost definitely, whenever somebody does that, assume what their thoughts are on it. So one, I just wanted to clarify that we're still fine to put in backup via the city manager. And two, I want the board to consider just adding to the commission or to the board after, or during, in the first section of, the first sentence of B, so that it just clarifies the fact that they're allowed to talk to residents still.
I think the C, this is exactly what it's talking about. To, if you have any item that you want to, you know, you want to provide information to the, to the board, you send it to the city manager, and he will place it as, on the backup.
Okay.
If you place it on the backup, then all the commissions have the same information and the public as well.
I, I agree, I'm good with that. I just wanted to clarify that that's still okay to do with C, because I didn't want to stop that, because I think that's really useful. So as long as that's the intention of C, I'm, I'm good with that. But for B, what are your thoughts on adding, you know, "Individual members of the city commission shall refrain from expressing their position to the board on a matter to be considered at an upcoming commission meeting," just adding to the board there?
You know, it clarifies it, I've got no issue. I think it makes sense. That's intent, you're right.
By placing one word there, if you, if you think it's going to be more clear to you, sure. I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
I'm okay with it. If everybody else agree with that? Yeah.
No, I mean, I've got comments, I don't know whether Commissioner Donovan's done or not.
I'm done. I'm done.
Oh, yes. We need to extend time, extend the meeting, so I need a motion to extend the time.
Motion to extend until 1 o'clock.
What?
I would say 11:30.
11:30, okay. Thank you, Ms. Proters.
I'm sorry, who was second to that motion?
Who's second?
Did I not hear one?
We need a second? We need to extend time, we got some items that need to be.
I'm good to extend time, but not to the date, or not to 11:30.
Okay, I need another motion then.
Motion to extend to 11:15.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry Panney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr? Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza.
Yes.
Ms. Jacobs, when was the last time our rules of procedure were overhauled like this? Do you recall, or Mr. Traski, the one of you?
You know, I'm sure each section would say at the very end when that section had a change, but the whole codebook itself was not, was codified in the 80s.
In the 80s, okay. So, I guess my point is, they've worked for a long time, and we're changing them, and a lot of people have problems, our technology's evolved, our systems have evolved, and we seem to kind of more constrict what we can say and what we allow the residents to say. Commissioner Donovan, I agree with you, with, you know, your adjustments to the rules of procedure, but I'm not going to support these rules, I think that Ms. Dabs, I mean, I really, really felt bad for her. I don't think we should have put her in that position to have to have done that. I am long stated that I'm the, I support Zoom meetings, the phones, emails right into the records, and that's going to be my position. There's no reason why we shouldn't. Pinellas County does Zoom, I double-checked on that today. So there's very good reasons why that should be done today. And I'm not going to get into, I had some questions concerning interpretations of some of the procedures, and what does that mean, and how does that work, and, but I'm just going to wind up doing what I think they mean, and if a commissioner or two commissioners has issues with it, they can certainly bring it up publicly and ask, or we can talk about it. But I inform people of a variety of matters that are coming before the commission, I try not to take a position, and I'm going to continue doing that, I don't know if that's contrary to the rules or not, but I'm going to continue doing that unless some of the commissioners feel it's contrary, then we can talk about that. So I don't want to take any more time, I agree with all the residents, and by no means do I mean to, mean, you know, say that your comments mean less than what they actually are, I just don't think there's anything that's going to change in that regard tonight, that's all I'm getting at. And as far as a resolution or whether it's an ordinance, it doesn't really matter. The changes are going to take place, and I think, was it Commissioner Vice Mayor Carr mentioned about whether a couple of us appear or not. Next year, I think you're probably going to see some changes to these, going back to what they were, and maybe even including the Zoom and reading emails into the record, so that's all I've got to say, thank you.
On the motion that we have on the floor, do you want to include the suggestion of Commissioner Donovan?
Was that the one, I can't remember, was that the one that made the motion? Okay, yeah, absolutely. So add to the, like, we're not going to be making comments to the board then?
Okay, another second as well. Roll call, please.
Just for quick clarification, just so the board is aware, on Article 4, the ordinances and resolutions that former Commissioner Delaca spoke about, that those strike-throughs were suggested by our code company, Legal Review, and the reason being because advertising ordinances is through state statute and could change, and depending on what type of ordinance it is, whether it needs a map or the days that you would have to advertise prior to the ordinance being read. So that is why those sections about advertising are out of the code. So with that, roll call, Commissioner Vadikiotis?
No.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry Paney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza.
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda is 25A, Sister Cities Program Adoption of Sister Cities Rules and Procedures. I'd like to tell you briefly the history of our Tarpon Springs Sister City Program. The Sister Cities Program was established in 1979 with a Resolution 79-28, and I believe it was Mayor Protas who started that, correct? Okay, the program was attended to establish a cultural exchange with Greece in April 1983. The city expressed interest to have all the Decanese Islands to become our sister cities. In 2021, the Sister City Committee was established with volunteers. In 2003, I said earlier, I'm so sorry, I said 2000, I corrected myself, it's 2001, the Sister City Committee was established with volunteers. In 2003, the Sister City Committee became 501(c) in order to be able to do fundraising. So the Sister City Program has been very, very active and productive. The mission of the Sister City Program is to promote and exchange education, culture, and economic development. We were able to develop internationalship, international relationships with Kallimnos, Halki, and Simi, also Larnaca of Cyprus. We have great results in education, culture, and economic development. Our education exchange program is with the American Foundation of Greek Language and Culture. We developed the Hellenic Studies Program in St. Petersburg College and Exchange Education Program with the Aegean University, who covers all the islands, including all our sister cities, and the base is in Rhodes, Greece, which is the capital of the Decanese. We also have exchange programs with Tarpon Springs Elementary School, and Plater Academy with the schools of Halki and Kallimnos in Greece, and we process to have more relationships like these with Tarpon Springs High School, with the high school in Kallimnos, as well as the elementary school there. As you know, the Sister City Committee and the Board of Commissioners approved to have three additional sister cities, and they are the Hania, Idrha, and Ilida. And I will be traveling to Greece for the signing for the three sister cities, and that's only the first part. The first part is the mayor from here goes to the sister cities there, and then the second part, the mayor from those sister cities that come in here to complete the process. The schedule for the Sister City Ceremonies for Idrha, excuse me, for Hania is in September 20th and 21st. For Idrha is September 25th and 26th, and Ilida is September 28th and 29th. As what we're doing all this, we realize that we don't have a process, official process in Tarpon Springs on the Sister City Program. So I want to thank the city attorney, Mr. Trask, and our city clerk, Ms. Jacobs, for preparing these documents for you, our review and approval. So with that, I'd like to go to the public comments on this program. Ms. Protas, before you start, I want to thank you, because you're the person who started this program.
Thank you, Anita Protas, 901 Bay Shore. We talked about this, and we need to thank Kathy Monahan, because I think Commissioner Vadikiotis may remember this, it took us about three or four years to get it, to get, first, when you started, you could have one. And instead of having one island or just saying Athens, because of the makeup of Tarpon Springs, we went to the Sister City Program to get all the Decanese Islands and the mainland of Greece. Anybody can, could become a sister city to Tarpon. And it was a lot of work, a lot of paperwork, a lot of history, and writing the islands and getting proof of what Tarpon was all about, because we are the only community in the United States made up of, a Greek community made up of the 12 Decanese Islands and the mainland and mountain areas of Greece. And I remember it came, I think, three days before I got out of office that we were able to do that. But my big disappointment is, we have yet to get Aeona. And the reason we wanted to do it was to get all the names of the first immigrants that came to Tarpon. So we need to work to get Aeona in here, because they played a big part in the sponge industry and coming to Tarpon. Mayor Alahuza, and I hope when you go over there, maybe you should make a little trip to Aeona and get it set up for us. I know we're not Kallimnos, but you do have Aeonites around.
I've been there.
And that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on that?
Funny, it's Culyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. Mayor, please don't be too upset with me, but at least a lot of people have left, and we're not going to replay this later. Recommendation to approve airline ticket from Tampa, Florida to Athens.
Right now, we're talking about the 25A. 25A.
This is Sister Cities?
Yes, 25A.
Oh, there's an approval right after?
25A.
Tarpon Springs Sister Cities Program Procedures, right?
Yes.
Can I make sure I have my four minutes? To approve airline ticket from Tampa, Florida to Athens, Greece, and back as presented and approved, that additionally, that additional transportation travel expenses from Athens to the sister cities, along with the cost of lodging or other costs that could occur, be approved if not covered by the host city. Currently, I am presenting the airline ticket for approval for my travel from Tampa, Florida to Athens, Greece. Additionally, there would be travel expenses from Athens to Hania, Hydrha, and Ilida. However, I have not advised that travel schedules and rates at this time are not available. Due to that, I am requesting authority to book and pay for these charges when determined. In addition, I am asking to have your approval to place items such as lodging or other costs that could occur on my purchasing card, if not, if not covered by the host city, and which I will bring back receipts. And I see this ticket is about $1,500 with one checked bag, and I just want to know where the funds coming from, from the sister cities? Is it donations, or is this actual city funds? Because I'm happy we have sister cities, but how are we integrating those people with us? Are we offering scholarships, are we offering lodging to these kids to come over here and, you know, foreign exchange students? What are we really doing to have the sister city stuff? I know it's very important, but these trips do add up, and I have a feeling, you know, people are going to go to Kallimnos anyways and other parts of our beautiful Greece, but is this all city expense money? And I can't imagine we're all just trying to be diplomatic on all these trips to Greece, there's a lot that goes on with it. We got to be able to focus on a lot of our goals, I mean, we love our sister cities, but how many are we going to add? And of course, I agree with Aegina, they're one of the first immigrants to come over here, but I want to be able to show these people from Greece how we can work them into some type of education program, trading schools, something, I don't know, but I don't think just going out there, meeting with people is the best solution. It also, you know, people talk about our city spending money for people to go on vacations to Greece and stuff, so it is an issue. And we still got goals we got to address, Mayor, we got this one year left, and I'm, like I said, I ain't, nobody's here right now. So when I look back to your post about addressing the needs of Tarpon Springs, a public swimming pool, we never got around to that. Neighborhood parks, there were a couple of properties out there with neighborhood parks we could have addressed. And a third boat ramp, so we can still go out on a, you know, on a high note to acquire stuff that's going to help the citizens of Tarpon Springs. I love Kallimnos, but I don't see how Kallimnos is going to help me from over there where I'm at here, I'm, you know, I'm an American. It's, maybe one day if I'm able to sponsor some family to have them immigrate over here, that'd be a great idea for me. But we got to be able to use this sister city program to collect the history and culture and provide a way for the future of people in those cities over there who have bright futures, as well as maybe try to integrate a working partner relationship here in Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? You're not? Need a motion?
Is this just for A? Are we doing A, B, and C?
For A.
The motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Well, I just want to say a little bit about the explanation in regards to the education that Mr. Culyas has, I think I'm going to, I'd like to answer that. The Sister City Program, what we have done so far, it's amazing. What we've done is an educational part. We created a relationship via the American Foundation of Greek Language and Culture, providing education here in America about the Greek culture. Second is, we have a relationship now between the St. Petersburg College and Exchange Program with the University of Aegean, that it covers all the islands, it just happens, the main university is in Rhodes. So students from here and professors will go over there, and then professors, and then students from there and professors will come over here. Okay, so that's, it's huge. The other thing is, we have elementary school programs where the kids can actually communicate using Skype and other things, talking to each other and exchanging experience and all that. Also, what we have done in the past was a group of students from here, from university, and some from high school, they went to Greece, they went to Kallimnos, and Athens as well, and all the expenses there, they will pay by the Greek government. Okay, I hope I'm clear what I was trying to say. Yeah. It's actually, it's not as easy to do that, we had a gap, like a year, because due to the pandemic, pandemic, we could not send any students from St. Petersburg College to there, but the program is ready. We're waiting for that COVID-19 to go away so students can go. It's 11:12, I need to extend the time again. Can I have a motion for that? I need to have those two items to finish, guys.
Motion to extend to 11:30.
Thank you. Do I need a second? Do I have a second?
This one I'll second, with the comment of, you know, I think when I started on the board, we used to always just work, 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 work as long as we could, I mean, we'd go till midnight, 1:00 AM, and I felt good about that, because we never stopped, you know, working for the residents. Whereas now, I think over time, I mean, look in the audience, I really appreciate the few of you being here right now, but the public input just so sharply declines as the meeting goes on. It's just not fair to residents to expect them, you know, you got to wake up at 6:00 AM the next morning for somebody that works in Tampa or something like that. We're discussing items that they might want to comment on at, you know, 11:15, we've been at it for four hours. So I'll second that, we'll go to 11:30 tonight, but just in the future, I'm going to try to be more mindful of these meetings getting done at 11 for the residents.
A roll call.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
No.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry Paney?
No.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes.
Mayor, I do have one question on, and I'm not sure whether it's just Part A, B, or C.
Well, we jumped, and it was supposed to have been in A, but the questions that Mr. Culyas had, it was actually to the C.
Well, did we get a commitment from these three new cities that they're going to come over here? I mean, do we have a date certain when they're going to come?
Well, they know that the program is that, it's two parts to it, we go there, then they come here. We go there, then they come here, just like the Kalimnos, Halkin, Simidit. And yes, they know that. Now, when they're going to come, that I don't know, because that needs to be communicated, and I'll do that when I go there.
Well, we got letters. I appreciated seeing the letters of them, the other cities welcoming you to their islands and city, but I didn't see any commitment that they're going to be coming this way. And we've had some other issues with sister cities that simply don't want to come over here to complete the process. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Cyprus is one of them.
That's not that don't want, they have some internal issues there.
Pardon me?
They have some internal issues with the mayor and the government, local government there, that's why they didn't come.
I guess what I'm going to say is that I'm going to support this tonight. I'm not sure about the rules, whether, I know we talked about them in the workshop from a long time ago. I've gone through the international website, and they pretty much mesh with that. I just don't see the benefit that we're going to get with seven, seven sister cities. And quite frankly, you're going over there, or, you know, the question I have is, did you invite anybody to go over with you, or?
Well, I couldn't do that till, actually, this is why we're here to discuss it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I mean, I'm hoping at least whoever's idea it was to put Haniah, Ilidia, and Idrha on us as sister cities, that they will accompany you for this twinning process. I really, really do. I mean, if they don't, I'm going to kind of question, why are we even, why do we even have these three sisters?
I can get the last part. Would you repeat that?
I, I'm hoping that whoever, whose ever idea it was to have these three sister cities to be Tarpon's sister city, that they accompany you for this twinning process. Because if they don't, I'm going to kind of wonder what the value is of having these three sister cities if nobody wants to participate in it other than the city of Tarpon Springs. The sister cities program, we have a small role. We've got a nice, very large committee that, that does a lot of our work, but I'd like to see some participation on the specific sister cities, that, in other words, reciprocal, than, rather than just the city kind of carrying the whole burden of everything. That's all. You've done a good job. Don't get, it's got nothing to do with you. It's got to do with the program itself, and I'd like to see it a little better defined.
I want, I wanted to remind you that July last year, 2020, is when we passed the resolutions.
Why not?
And you voted too, like all of us did. And so that was part of the process.
But we had questions then too, in the resolution at that time.
What questions was that?
As far as whose idea it was, nobody seemed to understand who was, who nominated them in town.
Well, they're different on each person, I mean, it's different on each sister city. It's not always the same.
I understand. I, that's fine, Mayor. I don't want to take up any time tonight, but, but we'll deal with this at a later date at some point. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on that?
The only other thing, I'm not so sure, I wish the city manager was here. I, I don't know the idea. You're asking for a credit card, or a check card, or something to take with you?
Okay. Well, we're talking about the A, but since you were asking about that?
That was the only other question I had.
Okay. Let me, let me tell you. We've been having this program for many years. All these expenses, I paid out of my pocket, and you know that. Okay? For the first time, our city had placed $20,000 for the sister city program. This is the first time ever. For the reason is to cover those expenses. All these years in the past, it came out of my pocket, and you know that. Okay? And you attended some of the functions that we had, and you told me how nice it was.
Yeah, no, I don't have an issue. I'm just asking the.
So now, this is why we have the, this is why we budgeted this money to cover these expenses.
Can we do a check card? That's, is it within our?
You know.
Mayor, I think he's trying to ask, do you use your own credit card? Do you take a city credit card with you?
Oh, the city credit card, for the first time.
I never spend anything, but you'd get one.
I can get one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
We could all get credit cards if we really wanted to.
So anyway, we have a motion for the, for the A, the 25A. In a second.
Yes.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to add, Mayor, on the last page about the community partnership, that is, we put it in the back of the rules, but that would change as we get new partners. And since its publication, we do have another addition, which is the Cretan Society, which I was not able to update today. But that last page about the partnerships will change. It's really not part of the rules. Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes. The 25B is the approval of gifts for the new sister cities.
Mayor, can, can we talk about B and C together? Is that okay?
Sure. Let's do that. That'll be fine. Okay, the, approve the gifts for the new sister cities. We went back, Ms. Jacobs, she went back, all the notes that she had from the past, and we're going to keep the same, give the, the same gifts as we did before, so we'll be consistent. That way, we don't have to think about for the next sister city, what are we going to get. So that's how we come up with the flag, the plate, and the diver statue. It's just repeating what we've done.
No, that's good, Mayor. I don't, I, I, I looked into it. We're fine with that.
And everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the 25C, 25C approval travel expense. And again, the, in 2020 budget, the city budgeted $20,000 towards the sister city program, and this is really the first time that we ever have any funds budgeted. In the past, I always paid out of my pocket. I think it's time now that, since we have fund to be paid out of that. I've reserved a ticket, it's $1,493. And I've reserved it, but I didn't pay for it until I get the approval from you, you know, from the board. Now, the addition expense, I did make some phone calls to find out what's going to cost from Athens to Haniah, and then to Idrha, and all those, at this time, they don't have any pricing. They don't know. I don't even know how to get from Athens to Haniah. It might be by airplane, it might be by boat, to the last minute. You see what I mean?
No, I understand.
So I, it's not easy to do this. And the other thing is, you cannot go from Haniah to Idrha, and then from Idrha to Ilida. You always have to go back to Athens.
Are you going to have public comments on any of these?
Yeah. Give me a second. Let me finish this, please.
All right.
And then, so that's why I'm asking to, if that, you know, if I have the permission to use the credit card for that. I've been having the credit card for many, many years. I never used it for anything, just so you guys know. As a matter of fact, I got a new one. I think it was expired, or I lost it, I don't know. But I got a new one for this reason. Ms. Protas, you want to say something? Go ahead, please.
Yes. Put another couple hundred dollars on this and go to Aynah. You're missing the big point, and you're putting a drop in because they came early and we haven't gotten them yet.
I'd like to answer that one, please.
Thank you. I know you got an answer for it.
Yes.
The paperwork.
Yeah?
But you can go over there and help them with the paperwork, and at least do that before you're out of office.
Okay. Can I answer that real quick?
Mayor, I'm just going to tell you, at 11:30, I'm going to vote no.
Okay. All right. So, real quick, I'm just going to say is that we received a request from Aynah, they want to become our sister cities. We want to finish those three, and then I have to bring it again, you know, to do this. Now, I already went to Aynah once before, and I talked to them about it. At that time, the previous mayor, it wasn't very perceptive. Now, they have a different person, plus we got a request from Aynah, they want to become sister cities.
I'm aware they were very receptive.
Well, you got different people, but now they are. So we're going to go with that. I need a motion for the B and the C.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any other comments before, for roll call?
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes. Now, I forgot to ask, anybody wants to come? They're welcome to come.
I feel like I'm in the placate right now, Mayor.
Eh?
I feel like I'm in the placate right now, the way we're dealing with this thing.
I think I need it with you. I think that would be a good idea.
It's frustrating.
No, I know.
The phone call that I got, that they're trying to get all these things organized.
We're fine. We're fine. I understand.
Motion to adjourn.
Perfect. I, I've got a comment. I know there's two items. We need to defer that, city attorney. There's two more items that we're not going to get to.
Yeah, if you're not going to get to them, then, then you're going to defer them to the next meeting, I assume.
Mayor, can I make the motion to defer the remaining items to the next meeting?
To defer 26 and 27 to the next meeting.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes. Well, that concludes the.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We have a meeting Thursday night for the budget. It starts at 6:30. Is there any interest for the board to start it earlier so we can get through a lot of these items, especially if one ended at 9 o'clock?
I personally don't have any issues, but you guys are the ones that work it.
Yeah, I have no issues. I mean, I could go until 5, or as early as 5. So I just, I think it'd be wise to try to get here earlier to try to knock out as much as we can.
Let's ask Commissioner Donovan, because he's working.
It's a workshop.
I could start it at 6. I guess I would just ask the city attorney if that, if that's okay to change the time of the meeting this close.
I'm looking for the rule on that. Irene, do you know if you're top edit, is there a 48-hour notice requirement?
It's 24 hours.
24 hours.
And this meeting, we did verify with Ron that it's not part of the advertised budget meeting that say, would say it started at 6:30.
Okay. So you could do it at 6 o'clock if you want.
Is everybody okay with 6 o'clock?
As long as we don't go later.
So you want to finish at 10:30?
No. I don't want to start earlier and end later. If we're going to start earlier, I want to end earlier.
All right. What time you want to finish then?
8:30.
8:30? Okay. So from 6 to 8:30?
I'm good until 9.
So, do we need to vote on that?
Yes, I'd like a motion on that, please.
Okay.
I, I only want to start the meeting at 6 if we can get it out as fast as we can. So I mean, I'll, I'll start the meeting at 6 if we put on Facebook, like, first thing tomorrow morning, saying, hey, we're going to start the meeting at 6. I just don't want to last second, change it by 30 minutes. I know nobody can comment because it's a work session anyway, but I'm, I'm good till 6, till whenever, or 6:30. It's up to the board.
I, I guess I just want to make a quick comment. As of right now, I'm not going to be at the third meeting because of a funeral on my wife's side of the family. I'll be out of the state. The city manager has not made any concessions to, to say we can move it yet. I would like to try to propose that, if there's any opportunities to move the third one. But that's why I'm asking to try to have a little bit longer meeting on the second one, because right now, it's, we're not having, I'm not going to be at the third meeting, so that's why I'm bringing this up.
Okay. So what's the motion there?
The motion on my side would be to start at 6 and adjourn at 9.
6 to 9. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any, any comments? Can we all make it? I'm not asking you. You're not working.
No, I mean.
You and I, we don't work. We don't.
You know, my, it's, whatever the commission wants, I'm happy with. 6 to 9, 6 to 8:30.
I'm just concerned for the, you know, the guys that have to work. You know what I mean?
No, I know, but I hear Commissioner Terapany wants to, unless you were kidding, at 8:30?
No, I mean, I.
I mean, you're okay with 9, or?
I mean, I would prefer 8:30, but I understand Commissioner or Vice Mayor Carr's thing. I mean, I don't want to, you know, not be respectful of his.
6 to 9.
I can always make a motion to adjourn early.
Yeah, that's right.
And roll call. We, we got two minutes.
And this is from 6 to 9?
6 to 9, yes.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes. Well, that concludes the regular session meeting and is adjourned at 11:28 PM. Of course, for you and I, it doesn't make any difference. We're all working.